Who are we missing? We got four. We can start with four. So I'd like to call to order the February thirteenth meeting of the regular session of the Flugerville City Council at seven oh six. If you'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
You may be seated. Trista, do we have any? I have item number three, public comment. In accordance with Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that's not on the public agenda, final public agenda, will only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Each person has about three minutes to speak. Is there anybody here wishing to make public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come forward. State your name, please.
My name is Doris Williams. I live at eighteen six oh three Mammoth Cave Boulevard in Flugerville, Texas, seven eight six six zero. I live in Highland Park in a two-story home. The model is the Dorchester made by D.R. Harden. And I'm here because of the smoke detector in my home has been making loud beeps for four days now. Just beep, 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 loud noises, and this is the fourth day. Now, I live alone, so I don't have anybody that I can, I can go and say, can you get up on a six-foot ladder at the top of the stairs and disconnect it or let me put new batteries in there? So I only have three minutes, so I'm, I'm talking real fast. So I feel the reason why I'm here is because, like I said, I can't, I can't reach it. I would have to stand at the top of the stairs, second story, right at the top, because the smoke detector is up there just in case there's a fire downstairs. I guess he thought that would be a good place to put it. Now, personally, I feel that the city of Flugerville issued the permit to D.R. Harden to build these homes, and the city of Flugerville sent their inspector out to inspect the homes after these, after these smoke detectors were placed in these homes in these dangerous, dangerous positions, where, you know, I could, I could actually have very serious injury if I got up on the six-foot ladder up there trying to disconnect that or put a battery in there. So I'm here to say, I called the fire department, you know, because they've come out a couple of times when we had a different fire department, and they were, they were very nice, and they, and they tall guy, you have to be like six feet if you're standing on the floor to reach it, and they changed the, the battery. But this last time I called the fire department, maybe there's those, this new fire department that we have in Flugerville, I called them, and they referred me to the non-emergency number for these kinds of things, since it's not a fire. So I called them, and I left a message, and I was told in the message that, well, we will, it won't do it today, but the next day we'll, we'll get back to you. Well, that would have been today, they didn't call. So I have a problem here, and I feel that the city needs to solve it. So I'm here to say, what do you plan to do about this, and who can you send over there to help me change the battery in my smoke detector and not issue permits to people that maybe have various nefarious reason for putting them in those, in those places in our homes?
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. We'll take care of that for you, ma'am. I haven't done a proclamation in a while. So this evening, I have the honor and privilege of presenting the proclamation for Black History Month, which is celebrated this month, and it's a celebration of the many achievements and contributions made by the African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six, and for many years, the second week of February chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln was celebrated by African-Americans in the United States in nineteen seventy-six as part of the nation's bicentennial. Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all over North America. Black History Month is a time where all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past successes and challenges of black communities and look to the future to ensure freedom, equity, and inclusiveness. I call upon all citizens to celebrate Black History Month, to study the history of African-Americans, and to honor the national and local legacy of African-Americans who have made significant contributions throughout history. This evening, I have Commander Makiba Lewis to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam City Manager. This is a example of what the city of Flugerville represents, the diversity, the multicultural that the city represents. I was fortunate enough to be a, one of the first full-time black officers in this city twenty-five years ago. So this is an honor, and I thank you.
And I would like to say that going back sixteen or seventeen years, I saw Officer Makiba rise from the entry-level road to now commander, and I'm so proud of him. And now, to celebrate our engineers in the world, engineers use their training, scientific knowledge, and specialized skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. Engineering has been called the invisible or stealth profession because everything around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way. Yet, we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. Engineering Week promotes recognition among parents, teachers, and students of the importance of the technical education and high level of math, science, and technology literacy, and motivates youth to pursue engineering careers in order to provide a diverse and vigorous engineering workforce. The year 2024 marks the sixty-fourth annual National Engineers' Week sponsored by the National Society of Professional Engineers. I proclaim February eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as National Engineers' Week in the city of Flugerville. And this evening, our chief engineer, Jeff Dunsworth, and the city's engineering team will, from CIP and Development Services, are here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Just a few remarks to, to say that this is an exceptional time to be an engineer. Many of you have heard me repeat this over and over. It really is a great time. You know, as a profession, we want to make a difference in our community. We want to be a positive influence. We want to be a positive impact on our environment and our community. I believe, I echo the sentiments of everyone in the city, all of our engineering department, our engineering team, that I extend our appreciation for allowing us to do our job in such an exceptional way. We appreciate the leadership, the progress. It's great to work in, you know, a progressive city with forward-thinking leadership. And in the promotion of E-Week, it's important that we reach out to the young men and women in our middle schools, in high schools, and encourage them to excel in their education, to pursue the STEM studies. The engineering profession needs young, talented, creative minds. We need the energy. This will help keep our, keep our profession strong and vibrant. I ask that all my city engineering team come forward, and we will take a photo with Mayor.
Okay, and last but not least, every year, millions of unwanted cats and dogs are let go. But pet owners can make a difference through spay and neuter practices. Spaying and neutering helps prevent a lower risk of illness and helps to control the pet population. Out of the four hundred and thirty-three dogs that came to the Flugerville Animal Shelter last year, three hundred and two were not spayed or neutered. Eighty percent of cats that came to the Flugerville Animal Shelter last year were not spayed or neutered. During this month, this month, long servants, I encourage all citizens to schedule an appointment and to invest in long-term care of their beloved pets by having them spayed or neutered. I proclaim February twenty-fourth as Spay and Neuter Your Pet Month in the city of Flugerville. And Rhonda is here to accept. Did you want to say something? Why not?
Yes, please spay and neuter your pets. It has a direct impact on animals entering animal shelters. If you need low-cost or free options for spaying and neutering your, your pets, that is available in our community, you can contact Animal Welfare Services, and we will give you that information. Thank you.
And now we come to item number... Wait, we're down here. Reading of the consent agenda, which is my favorite part. Trista, I have item five R to be pulled. Counsel, any other items?
Five B, five L, and five T.
We are going home at midnight, Mr. Rogers. Anything else?
No.
No, I didn't have R. BLT?
BLT and R.
And R. All right.
Okay, items five B, five L, five R, and five T have been pulled from the consent agenda. All remaining items will be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved, second. Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. And motion carried. Our next item is public hearings and ordinances. Item six A is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving the first reading of an ordinance with the caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas amending ordinance number one-two-zero-three dash one-five dash oh-two dash twenty-four of the city of Flugerville, Texas as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately two-hundred-and-forty-three-point-seven acre tract of land situated in the William Caldwell Survey number sixty-six, abstract number one sixty-two, and the John Leacy Survey number eighteen, abstract number eighteen, located, addressed one-six-four-three-zero Cameron Road from Agricultural Development Reserve to Parks Facilities and Open Space to be known as the eighteen forty-nine Park rezoning, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Hey, Robin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Miga. I'm the Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. The item before you tonight is the rezoning request for eighteen forty-nine park. This property is currently zoned Agriculture Development Reserve and is proposed to be rezoned to the Parks and Open Space zoning district. Background on this park, it was annexed into the city in two thousand and seven and then two thousand and sixteen, and then the city acquired these parcels in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and seventeen. It is the, it is currently eighteen forty-nine park, and we have a site plan under review for this property for the expansion of that project, which is approved through the two thousand and twenty bond. This property is zoned ag, as I mentioned. The adjacent uses to the north and to the west, you see Carmel subdivision, and then immediately adjacent is a property we call the Murchison tract. For the most part, it's surrounded by single-family detached, and there are some neighborhood services, commercial within this area as well. The area in white is our ETJ, and there's no proposed development in those areas at this time. The comprehensive plan calls this property out to be Parks and Open Space. It is also located within our park district, which is a focus of the park, being eighteen forty-nine park, and there's also a drive of those subdivisions and any development that takes place in the park district to kind of be able to drive traffic through trails and things like that to the park itself. The Parks and Open Space Master Plan was recently approved in September, and it calls for the completion of this park. The proposed zoning district is park facilities and open space. It is really a zoning district that's intended for all public facilities, not just parks and open space. But a park is an appropriate use and is allowed by right in that zoning district. So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting, and staff is also recommending approval. And I am happy to answer any questions you have, and Shane is also here if you have any questions about the park.
Counsel, any questions? Is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak? Shane? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion second to close the public hearing. I hit it. It's green. Motion carried. Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to, and a second to approve item. Motion carried. All right. Our next item.
Mayor Gonzalez, can we do that vote one more time? It...
We need to redo.
finalized it before all the votes came in.
Okay.
Only five.
We're redoing it.
Yep, redoing.
For the record.
Okay, motion carried. Recorded. All right. Item six B, conduct a public hearing and consider approving the first reading of an ordinance with the caption reading ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas amending ordinance number one-two-zero-three dash one-five dash oh-two dash twenty-four of the city of Flugerville, Texas amending amended, as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-two-three-nine acre tract of land known as Lot One, Block One on the Willbarger Creek Regional Water Treatment Facility subdivision located, locally addressed ten-one-hundred Greg Lane from Agricultural Development Reserve to Parks Facilities and Open Space to be known as a Willbarger Creek rezoning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this proposed rezoning is for the Willbarger Wastewater Treatment Facility. It is currently zoned Agriculture Development Reserve and is proposed to be rezoned to the Parks Facilities and Open Space zoning district. This just shows you, it is at the far southeast portion of our city. It is bound by our ETJ as well as Maynor's ETJ. You can see a little bit further on this exhibit, or on this aerial, the, you can see the Maynor ISD has a school facility on the east side of the parcel, and then you can see a little bit of the Austin Executive Airport on the west side. The property is, has a site plan that's under review for the, for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant facility, and that is the intended use of the property. The Flugerville Comprehensive Plan calls this property out as being utilities and Parks and Open Space. The gray delineates the utilities portion of the parcel, and then the green is the Parks and Open Space, which also shows part of the floodplain. It is within our southeastern Preserve District. Some of the needs on this, the eastern portion of town are very driven by the lack of utilities, which is a part of this project for the wastewater treatment plant facility expansion, or construction, I apologize. So it's also identifying the wastewater master plan as being the future site of the treatment plant, and it is also one of the projects that's supported for providing regional capacity for wastewater. The proposed zoning district is Parks Facilities and Open Space. I mentioned in the previous presentation, it is intended for all public facilities, not just parks, and any adjacent sort of civic uses. Yeah. So Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and staff is also recommending approval. I'm available for any questions, and then Brandon Pritchett with Utilities is able to answer any questions you might have as well.
Very good. And I would just like to comment that sixteen years ago, that school facility was not east of that piece of parcel when we bought it. So time has flown by, and growth has happened very quickly, as we're anticipating. Is there anyone here wishing from the public to make any comment? Okay. Second. Have a motion, a second to close public comment. And motion carried. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve six B.
Mayor, question?
Sure.
So in, in part of our development plan for that area, are we looking at any sort of trail continuity? Does, does our, our master, our trail master plan cut through that green belt area, and are we looking at any development there?
At this time, I don't think it expands that far south, but I know that that trails master plan is a part of the transportation master plan that is proposed for amendment. So there might be something that's proposed if Shane wants to speak to that specifically.
You get your chance to speak?
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That site itself is a secure site, so we wouldn't be crossing through that area, but we do have some parallel master plan, or trail opportunity.
So... So I heard you, I heard two things, and maybe I need to hear them again so I can understand them better. I heard that it's part of the trail master plan, but it's a secure site, so we can't cross it.
That site's secure, so we won't have any trails crossing over or through that site, but we do have some running parallel to that site.
Running parallel to the, to the group, but I'm probably on the other side.
Carmel side.
Yeah. Okay, that's exactly what I meant to hear. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. You bet. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And motion carried. Thank you very much, Rob. Item seven A is to conduct introductions and take action to make appointments to the Deutschen Fest Committee. I have an application received from Efren Resendiz. How many members do we currently have? Mr. Resendiz, you can come forward. How many vacancies do we have?
There are currently two vacancies, both, both with a term ending in two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay. So he's filling.
Either one. So there's two vacancies, both have the same term.
Same term, okay. Mr. Resendiz, would you wish to make a comment?
Glad to be here, and I'm hoping to be able to serve for whatever function is needed. I've been here for, I guess, thirty-six years in Flugerville, so I've seen it grow quite a bit, not as much as others, but I've been to Flugerville Festival a little bit, but I'm not really part of the festival or any of that. I came, I retired from the state in the technology sector, and so I came from the educational technology world. And some of the things that I'm seeing that are missing is something for, I'm guessing, the mid-teen types of youth at the Deutschen Fest. I'm hoping to try to bring some sort of technology ideas into the festival.
Cool. Counsel, do you have any questions?
What, what, uh, what other, so can you elaborate on that in terms of bringing teen things, and that's your motivation? Do you have, do you have grandchildren or kids?
One granddaughter and, oh, wow. She's everything. But no, she doesn't live here in Flugerville. No, but I retired, and I, I'm guessing I'm a late bloomer. I've, I've been in computers for, since seventy-six, and so, you know, pretty much saw the technology grow. And so I went back into school probably about fifteen years ago and saw the technology change. And so my degree is in career in technology education. And so what I'd like to see is something to mesh the Flugerville CTE program that is hopefully coming through and be able to get kids interested in some sort of engineering degrees or something of that type. That's what I'm seeing is needed in the Flugerville, and I'm thinking that would be something beneficial to show, to have our youth be able to do something there.
Cool. Have you been here all evening, Mr. Resendiz?
No, I, I got here about fifteen till seven and got to see some of the...
Okay, because we, we had several discussions about CTE.
No, I did not.
You can always go back and watch the video.
Being in this line of work, it's...
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe, I don't know.
I'm retired. Been retired for almost four years, and I'm enjoying being retired.
I bet. And thank you for being a resident of Flugerville so long. Appreciate it.
I know we have at least one other new member on the board that she also expressed a desire to create opportunities for youth and thought there was a gap where, where we went from the, the kiddie rides to, to the adult beverages, and there was a gap in between there that she was trying to figure out how to attract. So you'll find some empathetic voices on that board.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Could I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Resendiz to the Deutschen Fest Committee. My button doesn't work very well.
I can fix that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Cody?
We're gonna have to have you come back, Mr. Resendiz. Encore. Seven B, conduct introductions and take action to make appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have applicant Sally DeCilis. Come forward, please. And if you have a background in IT, that's okay, too.
I don't. I will turn on and turn off your computer at any moment.
Well, tell us a little bit about it.
So I am, so I recently moved to Flugerville, last three years. My daughter's been living here set eight years, so I wanted to move closer to her, and I have been enjoying Flugerville, and I enjoy the wonderful things that Flugerville... Flugerville and I enjoy the wonderful things that Flugerville has been doing. So I want to add to that. I also work in commercial and residential real estate, so I'm broker. So I'd like to do more for the community and bring in maybe some more tax money to Flugerville to maybe lower the burden on the residential people.
Do you find that would be a conflict of interest of any type?
No, if there was, then I just wouldn't vote. Yeah.
So, so what's your take? We heard some people earlier talk about the impact fees. What what's your take on the development environment here? Are we developer friendly or no?
Yes, you actually, you are developer friendly and you're not, not in line with everybody else doing impact fees. So it's not, most developers, so since I work in commercial and do mostly retail, uh, they're used to it or they got used to it in the last five years, so.
So your commercial emphasis is in retail, is that what you said?
Yes, yes, so basically dirt up.
Have you attended a PCDC meeting?
Usually online.
I'm sorry.
Oh, PNZ and council online.
You've seen it online?
Yes.
Okay.
And I've also, when I lived in Round Rock, so I didn't move far, but when I lived in Round Rock, I was part of the PNZ over there.
Okay, how many years did you serve there?
I only did two because I was part of the CAIC because I lived on the outskirts.
Right.
So I couldn't be like here, but now that I like living in the city, I really want to be a part of it.
Nice.
And you're, you're currently in PF one oh one?
Yes. No class on Wednesday.
Very good, thank you.
Everybody celebrating Valentine's Day.
I've moved to appoint to PNZ.
Okay.
Second. Have a motion and a second to appoint Sally. And.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the last time we had appointments to boards and commissions, we were here for five hours. Seven C is discussing, consider action to approve a resolution approving the mayor's nominations and appointments for the city of Flugerville Reinvestment Zone Number One, Falcon Point TERS Board of Directors. I have nominated um, two wonderful candidates who have a previous uh, history with the city of Flugerville. Uh, Mr. George Van De Worken, who was previously on the PCDC board and actually was the president. Uh, George, would you mind coming up forward, please? Is he here?
Yep, there he is.
I think everybody knows who you are, kind of sort of. How long were you on PCDC? I'm sorry?
Four years.
Four years, oh, okay, great, great. Um, actually, I have these three items on the same, the three nominations on the same item agenda, so I just wanted to ask you how long you'd served, so thank you. You may be seated.
I was thinking it would be tough.
We'll have to get together sometime, okay? Uh, the next nominee is Robert Romig. Um, and he was, has served formally on the Planning and Zoning Commission and I, if I'm not mistaken, he is also the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and he's present here this evening. And then the uh, last nominee is Daryl Houston, who is currently, has been currently on the TERS board for a number of years now and he's up for reappointment. And so I'm uh, recommending and nominating these three candidates to the TERS board. If you have questions, the candidates are here.
Move approval of the mayor's recommendation.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
We don't want to bring Robert up and ask him how long he served?
He turned out, didn't he?
Have a motion and a second to approve the nominees. And once again, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for being present. I know you weren't expecting to be grilled and I felt pretty confident of that, but I know with your experience that you've had in the past, you will certainly be a contribution to the TERS board and while it's a new environment, it's not all that different from what you've been experiencing in the past. And let's see. And item seven D is discussing, consider action to approve a resolution approving the mayor's nomination for chair of the reinvestment zone number one for one year uh, beginning January first, and that would be Mr. Mike Martin. Uh, Mr. Martin has been on the uh, TERS board for a number of years now and because of some transitions in the board, he kind of has seniority and uh, I asked him if he would uh, serve as the chair and took him a couple of weeks to decide, but that's okay. And uh, so I present him as the uh, and we, and I have to do this every time we do this uh, uh, process as well. Um, I present Mr. Martin as the, the chair for the TERS board.
Move approval of the mayor's nomination.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve, uh, Mr. Martin as the chair of the TERS board. Bring back Mr. Resendes, my buttons are not working. And motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for being present. If you wish to stay, that would be great. If not, thank you very much for your time. Seven E is to discuss and consider action to approve a resolution appointing a city council legislative subcommittee. Who is on our legislative subcommittee? No one yet, right? Okay, no one yet.
I know that had, I think Rudy had expressed an interest, didn't he?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Maybe we should wait to discuss this until Rudy's here, but hopefully we can move forward without him.
You guys want to wait? I'm fine with that.
Um, I think, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm also interested in serving, uh, if we've got more than me and Rudy, then then we should wait.
I'm interested.
You're interested?
No.
I'm not interested.
I'm interested too.
All right, so we got.
I don't know, having four on the subcommittee might not be good.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
You might have to call the meeting to order.
Well, three of us showed up for the interview.
Okay.
Well, that's true. Yeah, you know what we do. Never mind.
I know, that's what we said, he'll be back by what time?
He'll be back. Let's just wait to have him come back, because I'm sure he has some very.
We'll be here till eleven.
Okay, this is an item, uh, item seven F, discussing, consider action regarding improving construction contract with SKE Construction in the amount of two million one hundred forty five thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars for the Flugerville Estates Waterline Rehabilitation Project and authorized and city manager execute the same. Uh, Brandon.
Uh, so good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this was brought up, uh, the last meeting, we told you that we would bring it back. Uh, just to give you a, just a quick recap before we get through the, what the reason we brought it back. Uh, so this is a existing lines installed in the early nineteen eighties. Uh, they're part of the city's existing wa- existing water CCN, they're part of the contiguous water system. They currently don't have minimum requirements for fire code, fire flow, to be able to serve the neighborhood and serve the area. Uh, so there's a minimal amount of isolation valves to meet AWWA standards, but the big takeaway from this is that they are within the city's existing water CCN and with, and they're a contiguous part of our water system. So at the, the last meeting, we talked about, uh, you know, bringing it back, looking at uh, if there is possibility to, to a different rate for this, uh, these residents that actually have a, a direct benefit for this improvement. Um, so thing to keep in mind, that is if we were to set different rates for these, for customers that have a direct benefit for uh, improvement for them, uh, we would have to do that for the entirety of the system, right? We open this door of who receives a direct benefit based upon the improvements that they receive directly for their uh, for the improvements being done. Uh, so uh, if if the direction is to go forward, to look at different rates for different uh, different customers based upon if they receive benefits, uh, just keep in mind that that's a very lengthy process. So there's a comprehensive plan that we've gone through that indicates where these rates are gonna go. This was an approved project within the water CIP as well as in the existing water rates. So we would have to go through and update both the, the plans that we have currently in place that have been approved and are approved CIP and the approved rates as well. Um, so with that said, we're happy to discuss rates in city, out of city or, but also the big thing to keep in mind is that they are within our existing water CCN and existing water customers.
If we do this uh, as a separate uh, rate for these people that are out of the city, do we have to do this study and and change the rates for everybody inside the city and outside the city? Or can we own, limit it only to people outside the city?
So the, the big thing to keep in mind is if we do update the rates based on this improvement and based upon the benefit they get, just keep in mind, it's a system rate, right? So it it kind of benefits everybody. The, so for example, they, they don't see a benefit on other projects being done on part of the system. So the net, the, the estimate on that would be a net decrease for these residents because they are paying more, because they don't receive benefits of the Willbarger wastewater plan or the raw water line if they're on a groundwater system and which would then, the other customers would then see a net increase as a result of that.
Now, why, why is that? I'm sorry.
So when you establish rates on a system wide basis, it's spread across the entire area. Uh, so when you look at, you know, what, if you're going to get into zones of who receives the benefit of an improvement, uh, you then have to break out what improvement benefits each zone. So if you have a customer that for this neighborhood, for example, they're on, they're on groundwater, so they don't have the benefit of the surface water plant expansion because they're on the existing well sites. So they would, and they have less linear footage of lines compared to the rest of the city. So when you break down, you know, how that's done per linear foot, which is kind of an easy way to do it, or how you would do that in a, in a rate evaluation, they have less linear footage of line compared to the rest of the city.
So I guess I'm confused, which is, but that would only affect when you say that the, would affect the rate payers, rate in the, what did you call it? Just not a district.
The system wide.
System wide, yeah. So, um, and that would be the Flugerville water system? Are we talking about the CCN or?
So the Flugerville water system and the CCN are one and the same. So it's everyone else outside of that, if we're just talking about this specific area, everyone outside of that area would then have to make up for what they wouldn't be able to.
But, but these individuals, this particular neighborhood, this particular, this individual project uh, is in the order of ten thousand dollars per house.
Rough order, not including interest. I mean, I would have to do some napkin math there.
Well, yeah, including interest at a rate amortized over thirty years, thirty thousand dollars.
So do they have an option to opt out of this?
They're within the city's water CCN. They're already paying into it with their existing rates. So they're already paying into that project already.
Hmm, okay.
This seems like a separate directed benefit to those individuals by replacing their specific water lines. Are we, are we saying that the current water lines are unsafe or unable to provide um, potable water?
No, they can deliver potable water. They don't meet international fire code for fire hydrant distance.
Yeah, it's the fire hydrant.
Is that an issue with the SD?
If there is a fire, yes, sir.
Yeah. So how does this relate to the rate study that we did where we had like the A, B, and C rate areas? The zone, we had three different zones.
Those are, excuse me, those are impact fees are what those zones are. Uh, those aren't rates. Those are the impact fees that are paid in based upon where they're in in the sewer ship or new development coming in.
Okay, so it's, it's independent of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we, do we know what the, do we have an estimate of what the delta would be between the inserty versus that out of city rate?
It would take a significant amount of time to do that whole evaluation. So, I mean, just order of magnitude, if you're doing just a normal update on rates, just to, just evaluating where you're at, it's a ninety, hundred and twenty, up to a hundred and fifty days just to do that evaluation.
Do we have a guess?
Oh, we, we just went through it not that long ago, right?
We did, we did, and we're, we currently.
Are we talking like it's gonna be a twenty dollar differential or it's gonna be a two hundred dollar differential?
I think I guess, I think I guess for me it would be disingenuous and I wouldn't want to mislead you with.
It would be a guess.
I, yeah, I don't want to.
Understood.
Yeah, I think my, my frustration with where we're at here is we, we did approve rates just a little bit ago. We went through rate study. Uh, and uh, that was even postponed. I'm not sure if it was uh, one meeting or two meetings, we, we postponed that because we, uh, were trying to find ways, because those rates are pretty high and uh, impact a lot of our citizens. Um, I think we asked at that point in time, hey, is there any way we can get these rates a little bit lower? Uh, and um, you know, I think we came back at the same rate, but when we got to this project, uh, I know I realized that we've got a, you know, a directed benefit to a small group of customers. This probably should have been a, a separate project, not included in those original rates that would have allowed our other rate payers to uh, pay a little bit less. That's my opinion. Uh, and I think it's unfortunate, we didn't recognize it at the time. I think it would be appropriate for us to look at it at this point in time and, and appropriate for us to look at it moving forward.
Well, and so I'll, I'll add to that, not, not to be argumentative, but, but the, there's two competing responsibilities here, right? We have one where we have a responsibility to our residents and afford them the, the best service at the lowest rate. Uh, but two, we have the, the responsibility to all members within our CCN, uh, whether they're inside the city limits or not. And, and that's, that's wherein uh, we need to make very careful considerations. And that's why I asked my question, because sure, they're outside the city limits and typically I, I don't care, right? That's a, that's a DC in, in your little graph that we used to do when I was in IT back in the day. Uh, but um, but I do care, all right? Because I don't want to uh, be pricing uh, water at such a significant rate that, that the people that live there uh, cannot afford it. Um, so it's, so it's, I have questions rather, um, that, that you can't answer. And I understand that you can't and aren't, wouldn't want to guess, I wouldn't either. Would, so just, just from a, a, a timing thing, when we announced this, what are, when would we think of, of putting these new rates into effect?
Again, it would, it would have to go through a full rate proposal. You have to provide public notice when you adjust rates as well. So there's some, there's some public notice requirements.
Cause I'm, I'm curious as to whether or not that would put pressure on these, these uh, ETJ neighborhoods to, to organize and say, hey, we have a petition, we want to be annexed so that we don't have to pay the out of city limit rate within the CCN. I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not coloring outside.
No, no, you're not. I, I just want to make clear that I believe what staff is bringing forward is not a proposal to increase the rates.
Okay.
It's bringing forward a proposal for you to approve this project. It was brought back because Councilmember Weiss, for legitimate reasons, um, believed it should be looked at independently for purposes of can we, can we assess this area a different, a different rate based on the fact that they are the sole benefactors of this particular project? It was reviewed by staff and, and with legal. Um, and we, we don't propose that you do that. If you would like to have some advice and direction as to legalities of that, I'm happy to go into closed session and have that discussion. But right now, there is no proposal to increase the rates. The proposal is to approve the project. The rates are currently set where they're set.
Okay. And just to make sure we heard that right, your guess is that if, if we go to uh, this segmented rate system, that those, the, the people in this Flugerville Estates area would actually end up paying less for their water than people in the rest of the city, even though they've got this one directed benefit project? Based upon if we're looking at what they are directly benefited from and the linear footage of water lines comparatively speaking.
Could you tell me, Brandon, what's the base rate for the individuals in this neighborhood? Uh, I imagine that is at a five eights?
It's a five, they're all standard five eights. I'm trying to remember all of the base rates. Uh, but it's a standard five eights, no different than any other water customer that we have. I've got to double check it real fast.
Is that forty dollars, sixty dollars?
It's like forty or fifty something. I'm trying to look it up real fast.
I, I guess I, I question your analysis because amortized over thirty years, this is, this is what, a hundred dollars a month? Per, per, per household? And if the base. And if the base rate is currently 40, 50, even $60 a month, then they'd be paying more, um, just based on this one project.
If you're looking at the linear footage of lines that we have to maintain with.
If we're looking at the $2.1 million project, that's, that, that's like $100 a month right there.
If you were to, yeah, I see your point.
Amortized, yeah. I mean, I'm, I, I may be off, maybe it's only 50, maybe they're paying 50, maybe it's nets out, but it doesn't seem like it's, doesn't seem like they'd be paying less based on the, uh, this individual project, not to mention all the other benefits of the, uh, the water system that they receive.
So Charlie, understanding the scenario, does this get us into any litigation opportunities?
So a rate increase, um, outside the jurisdictional limits of the city, we'd have to give notice if it is indeed an increase. I'm hearing it might be a decrease if it's, I think the reason why I say it's a decrease is because if, if we decide to adjust rates based on benefits to areas, it's my understanding that there are certain projects within the system that do not benefit this area. And so if that's the route we're going to go with respective benefit, they would subtract the cost of that from the rate. And I think that's why you're saying, I think that, because you, because the, the statute says that the rates have to be just and reasonable, and the statute bases that on that the rates shall not be unreasonably preferential, prejudicial, or discriminatory, but shall be sufficient, equitable, and consistent in application to each class of customer. And in this case, the class of customer is a retail customer. It's not an in-city customer or an out-of-the-city customer. It's a retail, it's a residential retail customer. And so that's how we would have to go about making that, that, that rate-making determination is based on that. And so that's why I think he says that it, it may end up being lower, because we would have to subtract some projects that they don't benefit from, right? And so having said that, um, if you were to just make a rate change, do a surcharge as this is, is stated, we would of course try to do that in the most appropriate manner possible. The remedy for a, a residential customer, if they, if they're not happy with it, is they can file a petition with the PUC to challenge that rate. Uh, there's no cost to the citizen to do that. They just, they have to get a petition and do it within a certain timeframe. And then if it's an appropriate administratively-approved petition, uh, then it goes, gets sent to an administrative judge and we have a hearing as to whether or not it's appropriate rates or not. And that's, that's the remedy. So it's not a district court issue, it's a PUC issue.
Oh, heaven forbid. And if either party is unhappy with the result of the, the administrative hearing, then they could appeal it to the district court, is that correct?
I believe that they can, yes.
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
We're always in a pickle, aren't we? I shouldn't say always.
So if, if we, uh, segment out the, uh, the system rates, uh, and we're looking at these, at Flugerville Estates guys, they're, they're not benefiting from our two straws into Lake Travis.
There's specifically, that, that, that's part of the groundwater service area. So same thing with they're, they're not benefited from, uh, there's a water line rehab project in another neighborhood, um, something like the historic colored addition that's being done. They're, they wouldn't be benefited, they wouldn't have to pay into that because they're not being, seeing the direct benefit of those type projects.
So what, roughly speaking, what are the costs of those projects that they're not benefiting from?
That's a, that's a pretty hefty, but I mean, it, it wouldn't stop the water, right? You'd have to think water and wastewater as well. It's a pretty, pretty hefty number, um, because you got to think they're, you know, they would only directly benefit from this project and any other ones that is pretty, pretty minimal, uh, pretty minimal if any, uh, that directly benefit these customers directly.
I guess what I fall back on is if, if I build, if I'm building, uh, extending Kelly Lane, I'm building a street, I don't charge the people that drive on that. I don't charge those neighborhoods a specific rate for that and, and change things. I think the confusing dynamic here is, is the fact we've got in-city residents and out-of-city residents, but what's paying for this isn't Avalorm property taxes, this, what's paying for this is the, is the water rate. And so it seems to me that once, once you take that into consideration, that everyone's paying the same utility rate, then any change to the system is something that can be absorbed by the system, right? Whether, whether they're replacing a, uh, a, you know, a water valve on my street, you know, they don't charge me for that because that segments the water in my neighborhood. It's, it's a cost that's borne by the entire system. And I think just because we've got a city limit line here, that's not the delimeter in this grid. The delimeter here is are you served by our water system or not?
That's, that's very true. I can't, can't argue with that. I would say that in this case, uh, we're replacing a, a water valve in another neighborhood, we're replacing, uh, you know, a sectional line somewhere else. Those are operational, that are typically, you know, within the bounds of the existing, uh, base rate that you already pay. This particular improvement is potentially double the existing base rate that, that this section of the water system, uh, pays. So it's a, it's a disproportionate when we're talking about equity. We got to think about equity all around. And it does seem like it's a, a much larger burden on the rest of the citizens to subsidize this particular section of water line than, um, than the benefit they receive.
But we're not changing the rate for these citizens.
No, we're not. We're not, exactly.
You're saying we should, is what I hear you saying.
Yes.
But we didn't change the rate for the historic colored addition when, when we proposed a, a water rehab program there. We're, we didn't change the, the, the water rate for any of the other projects that we're doing for tho, that locality.
And, and are those projects, uh, a, a cost benefit that is appropriate within the existing customer base rate?
I, I think, I think the, I think we're looking at a very comparable, uh, scenario between historic colored addition, which had two-inch water lines, which didn't meet fire code and didn't serve fire hydrant for, for the residences or businesses that were there. I think that is comparable. Do you disagree?
Uh, I don't know that I do.
We do.
I don't think we have the, um, the same equity issues in this neighborhood that we have in the historic colored addition.
They're, they're, they have a water meter or they don't. That, that's right. That, that's what I'm looking at. I mean, if, if, there, there's sections of line, uh, that, that we will be rehabbing, you know, I haven't seen the water master plan, I haven't memorized, but I know that, there, there's, there's pressure, uh, to release, uh, improve the amber lines. PVC pipe does eventually wear out, or the soil pushes it to such an extent that repairing it, those operational costs that you're talking about become too expensive and you put in new pipe, or maybe new piping technology 20 years from now, we're rehabbing lines. We, we don't, I, I, I can't recall a situation where we've, we've isolated the cost to, to the people that are directly benefits, whether it be that pressure plane or, or whatnot. And so I, I understand your defense of, of, of residents versus non-residents, uh, which I think this is, but may clarify.
I, I wouldn't say it's specifically that. Uh, I think that's contributing, but I think, uh, the directed benefit, like you said, it's a, the, the benefit per connection is greater than the base rate that, uh, that we charge per connection. It is being subsidized by the rest of our rate payers.
That happens in every area where we do a water project. The benefit to the people that are getting the new lines.
Not necessarily. If, if that were, if that were true, then our base rate would not cover our improvements. But our base rate is set specifically to cover our improvements. So in that scenario, some are getting more of a benefit, some are getting less, because our base rate is a blended rate. This particular project is so dramatically apart from that, that it, it seems that it is inequitable, in my opinion. And that's perhaps, in your opinion, it is not.
Anyone else wishing to make a comment? Brandon, you have anything else to add?
I was just going to mention if any of the questions before I move.
I just want to say that as far as I'm concerned, this is about safety, period. They need fire hydrants. We've brought it up, we've got to take care of it.
Okay. Need a motion or not?
Uh, well, I, I will hazard a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the, uh, construction contract, uh, outlined in, in item seven.
Can I have a motion?
I'm going to second that.
In a second. You think you know, but there, Mr. Rogers?
I am.
Okay. And motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the gentleman from SK were here, so thank you very much for coming back. Uh, our next item, uh, to, to, to discuss and consider action regarding improving the PCDC executive director to enter into contract with TIP Industries in the amount of $75,000 and authorizing PCD expenditures not to exceed $50,000 to match an additional $25,000 grant award from Texas Workforce Commission for the purpose of conducting Flugerville Workforce Study. I don't know that you can add anything else to that.
Well, it was pretty wordy. I will be less wordy, hopefully. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm here this evening on this item. We were requested to come back this evening. Uh, the council had wanted to first consider more information about the SEDs prior to making decision on this contract. We took liberties as well to make, uh, changes in the scope of work and shore up any, uh, any question there might be about any research data. Those were two items that you had in your discussion. This is a draft contract. It will need to go back to the PCDC for approval and then revisit you later. The contractor though is here because we, that you, you did request for them to be here. They have the scope of work summary that they have done, the changes in the scope of work this evening and can review those with you and take any further comment, uh, after your discussions earlier this evening on the SEDs. Uh, and to that end, we have Tom Stellman somewhere over here, who is, uh, CEO of TIP Strategies to do that. Tom?
And company?
Good evening, I'm Katrina Parky. I'm a consultant at TIP Strategies.
So you guys received in your packet, um, a new revised proposal, and there were several items last time that you guys had recommended that we make adjustments to in order to sort of have this aligned with what you guys were thinking. And so we made those changes to it, and I have a list of those. I've got them on a PowerPoint. I don't know if you want me to put them up or. I, I'm okay just reading it off if you'd like.
Advance it. Unless you want me to do that, I could do that for you.
No, I think I'm okay. And I brought reinforcements, so in case there's other hard questions, so. Yeah, last time you had asked a question about the Target Industries, and that was a discussion because of the SEDs and the recommended Target Industries, and there was a, a recommendation that we also consider, you know, retail as part of our kind of deep dive around where the demand is for the occupations that would support retail. And there was a specific question around, would we be having a forward look? You know, in other, in other words, as we go through our analysis, if there's something that we uncover that would say, hey, you know, AI, maybe there's something else out there that is going to influence, uh, another industry that wasn't considered within the SEDs, would we be willing to look at that? And the answer was yes, because we will do a comprehensive look at sort of the regional workforce and if there are any sort of advantages there. The stakeholder engagement, we had expanded the scope there to include any additional targets that would come up as a result of this. And then we expanded the workforce analysis because there was, uh, you know, questions about, is this primarily for the benefit of the residents or is it for the benefit of the companies that we're trying to attract? And the answer was both. And so we amended that to make sure that we're looking at both of those. For these industries that can employ the workers here with the right training and will this also make you more competitive because you have the plans in place to train for the industries that you're trying to attract here, so.
I think a piece of that was, was understanding the jobs that people are driving out of the city for, to make sure we're creating opportunities for them to, I mean, and, and someone said earlier, there, there was a comment from someone earlier that they said, oh, well, you know, we, we create those jobs and they'd be at the same pay or maybe a little more, try to get competitive. You, you could offer that job at less money. If you're saving me three hours round trip a day driving, I'm working here, right? Which, which Doug, Doug's, uh, age-old point, that saves us on, on infrastructure development because suddenly now we, our roads aren't as congested because everyone's working around the block instead of having to go through a major collector to get out of a tollway, a toll road. Uh, so, so that, that I hope. Yeah. Is a significant component.
Yeah, part of our commuting pattern analysis is to look at you guys leaving.
I like to, I'm happy to see that, I know.
Yeah, and what, you know, what are the jobs that they're holding within the region that if we were to make that a target here and grow that industry here, that we may be able to track them back and at least not have them commute.
And, and maybe we'll get the obvious answer, right? They're all driving north to Adele Campus or they're all driving south to Adele Campus, but, but we'll know, right? It would be a definitive answer.
I don't know if you guys had additional questions. We made, I thought it was a pretty solid attempt at addressing many of the issues to make this a more comprehensive strategy.
I appreciate your, uh, your progress on this. It, uh, it does look much, uh, more well-honed and obviously it's on our, our own paper now, uh, which I, I know is a big concern. I worry still about the timing. We, we just had our first review of the, the SEDs in our work session. Understanding if this informs our strategic direction or not, I, I feel is still a bit premature. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, I would add that, I mean, while your targeted industries align with SEDs, uh, your workforce study might reveal something different, which means our SEDs is not right. And that is kind of, kind of to Mr. Weiss's point, it's like putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. Uh-oh.
If I may make one suggestion, um, what is before you is a draft. The PCDC will need to review it and approve it, uh, again, obviously, uh, with these changes, but given the fact that council's going to deliberate on the SEDs, we can further hold on, uh, making adjustments and try to interpret that prior to bringing it back to you. The other thing is we have asked for an extension on the grant award, which allows us a little more time in order to do that. But if we were to be able to take it back to PCDC and allow them to review that and approve it in a timely manner and bring it back once you all have finally deliberated on the SEDs is, would be the recommendation of my president.
What's your timeline on the grant?
Uh, we've asked for a six-month extension. So the timeline we have here would potentially need to be adjusted maybe as much as. Uh, we've asked for a six month extension. So the timeline we have here would potentially need to be adjusted maybe as much as thirty days, you think is maximum? Yeah, if we can get a resolution on that, I think the study that they're looking to do uh will be very beneficial to us. But I think it would give us some time to to work on our end. So right now we've requested a six month extension from T W C and ta- uh workforce solutions capital area. And they have a grant at admin level. Uh, we're hoping to get that approval on before the twenty eighth of this month. And so then we could bring it back in March. Once we've met, we meet also on the twentieth of March and could bring it at this following city council meeting if we have a resolution on the Seds.
Amy, I really appreciate you taking the initiative and getting that extension. That's uh that's great news. I would say I would prefer to delay this until we have more information.
So I mean, the the question I always ask is is where what do you see influencing you to 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 change your mind or or change what's going on here? I mean, we've got some pretty broad buckets here that we've been talking about for years. And I don't see any of those buckets changing in any significant way. The the change that we've made is from campus, office campuses to retail. And and we see that reflected here. Uh, and then we see a catchall bullet point there to identify things that are outside the illuminated bullet point list, right? And and so what what do you see potentially changing by by delaying?
I I see the potential of uh what I would think are significant changes in the Seds. I think there's a a lot to uh change there and that will inform what we do here. Starting on this before we have adopted the Seds, seems like we're establishing the direction uh today when we are still discussing what we want the Seds to say. Uh, what we want the strategic direction to be, I should say.
So I'm I'm leaning towards thinking that that these are two independent targets, right? The the Seds is a a an intentional focus on specific industries that we want to cultivate, right? What is, what do we want to be when we grow up, right? Uh, this, I I look at this as more of uh giving me an intentional understanding of what are our current resident population comprises in terms of workforce buckets? And and do they align with any of these uh that 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 we can create industries here for for them to stay in this area? It it, we talked about cart before the horse. I wonder if this isn't the horse. And we need to know what our our what our people are doing to make sure we construct the right cart.
So it's it's twofold. I think you're half right.
I love to be half right because I'm only half wrong that way.
Well, and and the other half is not necessarily wrong. Uh, but the, you know, you're you're not wrong.
Now we have three attorneys.
Finally got to say it. So o- only only a portion of this is establishing what our current workforce, uh what their skills are and what would be beneficial to them. Uh, the the other part, and I think it's, I I call it half, it's probably more than half, is identifying the uh needs of the future employers. I know that's specifically called out, the needs of the future employers. Uh, and that's that's where I think when we haven't decided what our target industries necessarily will be, trying to identify the future employers and their needs will be premature at this stage. That's uh I I'm really excited that the portion of evaluating our current workforce has been added to the agreement. Um, and I think that's uh that goes a long way to get us where we need to be. But I still think we've got that that Seds milestone before we hit this one.
I I I agree that there was there was good cost to 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 delay deliberation on this because of the the legal document. And I and I think we've clarified all that and I'm I'm happier with that. I I don't know that I agree that that these buckets are going to change in any significant way.
If I may, in order for us to be able to be eligible for the grant, the first item was required.
I'm sorry, the what?
The grant for the grant with uh workforce solutions capital area through T W C. Uh, that that uh particular grant, when we applied for it, uh required the advanced manufacturing. So that was number one. And then everything else can be added that we like, but that was one that was.
So we've got a required bucket. Caesar's talking about A I and I couldn't agree with him more about that. We got information technology bucket. Uh, life sciences, we've we've heard all about the million square feet of of wet lab space that we need now. We only have ten thousand, so we're we're good there. Can't can't disagree with that bucket. Retail is one of the things that we have constantly been complaining about in terms of making sure we have a cohesive and 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 retail strategy with points of con- convergence and that we're aligning with the policy that we established on this dius, I don't know how many months ago. Uh, and and then we've got a catchall bucket that says, look for other low hanging fruit that we might be able to take advantage of. I I don't see any significant changes to that, sir.
I I think your life science figures were drawn from whole cloth. That was that was not a number that was in any way backed up by any information that was provided this evening.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
I do believe the study will help inform the community regardless, but we can do whatever council requests. It does require approval by the P C D C board. President has asked for it to come back to the board for consideration. And in the meantime, while you deliberate on the Seds, we will do whatever you ask, of course.
Mr. Mayor, will you uh accept the motion?
Sure.
I uh move that we uh postpone consideration of this item until March twenty sixth.
Second.
Have a motion second to postpone the item until March twenty sixth. Just confirming that March twenty sixth is the council meeting.
I know. I was thinking about the same thing.
It is. It's the fourth Tuesday. Okay, motion carry. Thank you. All right, where are we? Uh, discuss and consider canceling or action can regarding canceling a council meeting.
Does that say off council meeting?
Yeah, especially the one in December, uh meeting in twenty twenty four.
Similar to last year, um mayor and council, the uh y'all had canceled one meeting in the summer. As many of the other cities in our area do so, we were looking at our budget calendar and other items that were scheduled for zoning, et cetera, and planning. Our recommendation, if you were to want desire to do that for this summer, would be the second meeting in July, which is July twenty third. Allowing for, that's our heavy time for budget, allows our staff to really focus on that, allows vacations to be taken um for both you and for staff. A thought.
I'm sorry, it was the.
Second meeting, July?
In July.
In July. July twenty third.
July twenty third, okay. Not the first meeting in July?
No, sir.
That sure would be a lot more convenient for those of us who are out of town over the July four holiday.
The July twenty third is also, I would say, beneficial because it's a, well, it's a five Tuesday month. So it gives a a a bigger, a more, a greater selection of weeks to uh travel if you need to.
Are you headed to Disney that week?
Not yet.
So wait, wait, hold on a second. Would would it be reasonable to rearrange July so that we meet on the sixteenth and the thirtieth? Would that work?
I think that date was recommended by because of the the ability for staff to be able to take that timeframe off. That's what you're recommending, right?
I mean, sure, I could look at that, but we have a very set budget calendar, so those dates might. We can do what you like, um but that may be more difficult to maneuver.
Okay, it's just one council meeting. Decision tonight or can we make this decision? Give you time to look at whether those July dates were.
I would like to make a motion for us to cancel the meeting on July the twenty third as suggested.
Was it the twenty third?
Yes. Yes.
Second.
All right, motion and second.
Now you know we can take vacation.
There you go.
All right, motion carry. You can take off. We can charter a plane to do that. Uh, our next item, where are we? Are we back to Seds? Hold on, yeah. So item uh seven, I discuss consideration regarding the P C D C comprehensive economic development strategy plan. We're back.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Amy Madison, Executive Director of the Flugerville Community Development Corporation. This evening, we are before you with a discussion action item on the comprehensive plan three point O. We had a very robust conversation during uh our workshop this evening. And um the uh vendor is here this evening to continue that discussion and consider any further comment uh for this item. Tony?
Yeah, hello again, everybody.
Hi.
I think, you know, as Amy said, it's been a robust conversation and we want to continue to see how this can be improved. So I don't think there's any need for additional slides, but just welcome any further input from all of you.
Start of a two hour conversation now.
We may have to take a break later.
Um, no, I mean, I would just offer to uh provide you with my uh uh my marked up copy.
Yeah.
Uh, and see if we can get some of those concerns addressed. I I say that um and I know uh earlier when uh Mr. Mater was here, he he reflected that it seemed like, oh, we're we're close. We need to refine. I I feel like we're we're much further away. We need to take some some huge steps back and and maybe refocus. Um, but uh I think a a first step, let's get feedback on it and see if we can get a a revision out.
So help us.
Based on the comments that we had this evening, I think it was a rather extensive conversation.
Yeah, to to reiterate, make sure, you know, that we're doing this in the right path. I know I heard some of the conversation around targets and reevaluation of those.
And I think I even heard some conversation and and I don't know if I was supported. I think I heard uh at least two of us say this, that uh maybe the uh the industry target approach is is not necessarily the the appropriate approach. Maybe it's the the job class or the 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 work um target rather than than an industry target uh that makes more sense.
In a sense of wage levels or it just carries what kind of criteria would you're looking for us to evaluate?
Uh, I I think it's um the uh I'm gonna say non manufacturing.
Yeah.
Would it be easier if we just submitted um any requests, any further request or try to remember what we what we talked about? Some of the specifics that we talked about and just send that to you?
We we got good notes on that, but yeah, we're welcome any additional input, you know, including Councilor Weiss's notes there.
Well, I I would hope that all of my colleagues would would take the opportunity to do that. I think so. Review and mark it up. Uh, you know, Acrobat is great about allowing you to make comments.
Yeah.
My comments are littered through here.
Yeah, they are.
I'll give you a digital copy or or you, yeah, oh, yes, that unfortunately, all my colleagues got a copy of mine as well. So they got to see my my train of thought on all that. It was a long weekend. Yeah, what do you think, Mayor?
Well, oh, uh, I think staff also had some thoughts on this as well, so I'd like to give them the opportunity to.
Um, based on our retreat discussion, and this may help um hopefully characterize, if you'll get to that slide, please. Um, and I've passed it out. It's really one page. Um.
Much more succinct than mine, thank you.
Blah, 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 next slide. Uh, basically on page forty five of Seds, it breaks down what I would call three pillars. Uh, sorry, I don't have them memorized. I'm um don't want to put my glasses on. But it really broke it down into two, two different kind of buckets for you. The first slide is quality of life. If you toggle to the next slide, so y'all just get a sneak peek. And the next one is business recruitment and retention, putting really together workforce with business recruitment retention. Go back, call me quality of life. What we've heard you say is to fund land purchase. We've heard you to um look at that recruitment policy. We've heard you say invest in mixed use developments to support shopping, dining, entertainment. We've heard you talk about funding parks improvements and attracting a university to locate in Flugerville. So there's my summary of what I heard on quality of life. Next slide, um purchase land on key corridors to specific development patterns um and land uses. I think we that marries nicely with a lot of work that Ernst and Young has done. Incentivize industries that have the greatest potential to provide jobs and positively affect the quality of life in Flugerville. Hopefully, uh Mayor Pro Tim Weiss, that speaks a little bit to it's not just jobs or what industry, it's that quality of life piece. Collaborate with universities, I S D nonprofits, private partners, strengthen workforce training opportunities. Support innovation entrepreneurship center. Um, we would probably want to define what the word support means. I get nervous about the verbs used throughout Seds as some of it to me is um soft. It'll say to champion or to support. I've changed some of that to say purchase, fund, execute, create, et cetera. So you'll see that. Create a wet labs phase, incentivize innovation, et cetera. So really, we just took what we heard um and summarized it into those two. Having to take any questions, you might have.
No, I mean, there is for that. I guess the question I ask is, you know, though this all makes sense and it's the synthesis of a lot of the material. Is it as easy? Does there need to be a revision of target industries or is it a build out around the structure that you desire?
I think there's a structure that we desire, right?
I mean, I'd have to ask my colleagues, are we satisfied with the the structure of this approach? Uh, or do we want to uh take a different tact? Uh, I really do appreciate uh this uh this one page summary and the uh how direct you are with quality of life. I think quality of life speaks largely to what I was trying to communicate over the course of, you know, two hours. That's uh, thank you for for summarizing it so succinctly.
I just really like the picture. I just want to point out my favorite part of that. You're welcome.
I think a lot of these would be in conjunction with what you presented to us.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
In conjunction. And I think that goes to what I already was explaining, what I was trying to say, I guess, better and more elaborately. Yeah, just more than just attracting, I guess it explains more of those four points that we were looking at. Was it four Jim? It was a four points, right? I think that explains it a little bit better, a little bit more. Gives uh staff or P C D C staff and and the board better guidance, I think.
Yeah.
And from that, I think you could create action items under each. I think it simplifies a little. The the work they do is amazing. We're not, we didn't get into demographics. This is really just what we heard you you say over the past year um and wanted to provide that.
And and we've built at the implementation tables with all the tactics around this that already support largely all of this as well. So it's 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 reconfiguring and just making sure it's in alignment.
And I'll I'll be real frank with y'all. We we wanted something kind of like your strategic plan isn't fifty hundred pages for the future of of the city. Um, we wanted something when we meet with developers to be able to say that this is, this is what we're looking for and and something um just a a summary of of that work.
I I don't think we're saying anything too much different other than, and I I refer to the King James version and the New International version of the message. You just read it differently and it just one pops out a little better than you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I really enjoyed this. It just seemed to me like, uh, I'll, I'll show you. This half was just fluff to me, explaining some things, but really just kind of like a lot of the things you were really, and then we got it in the meat and potatoes right here. I'm a meat and potatoes kind of guy. I like jumping right into it because it kind of identifies what we want rather than all the other fluff, for lack of a better word. Um, I don't know if y'all felt the same way.
How far on the mark could you feel the meat and potato section is?
Yeah, that's a ma- main part.
Well, looking at this and based on what we talked about it during the, uh, um, that weekend meeting, uh, losing my words already, it's been a long day. Retreat. Retreat. I hear retreat and I think Boy Scouts and all of that stuff, you know?
I didn't ride horses, it wasn't a retreat.
We didn't do that. Um, I wouldn't say far off. I mean, it, I guess it's better explaining it, you know, a, a better way of explaining it so that, I, I think you put, said earlier, what you said earlier, you know, um, we have these verbs in there that just kind of leave things open for interpretation. And this kind of explains it a lot more, um, adding this stuff, I would say, yeah. Does that make sense?
So, so we had the, the college dissertation level and then this, explain it to a fifth grader level.
No, explain it to a councilmember level.
Synonymous.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I, I think, I mean, and, and, and again, here I talk about the two different versions, but, um, I think as I read some of this information here, this kind of gives me a, uh, a sense of, oh, well, so we're gonna accomplish this. And it's not maybe, or we're gonna look at it, or we're going to focus on it, or we're gonna study it. It's like, this is what we're gonna do. We're, for example, incentivize an industry that has the greatest potential to provide jobs. So, I mean, in, in my mind, that's what I focus on versus a lot of the information that's in the SEDS that kind of, kind of takes me everywhere and maybe nowhere, you know?
And, and to that point, you know, I, I think I asked earlier in terms of, of benchmarks, right? What are your benchmarks? And we were like trying to figure out, oh, well, how many people travel out of the city and is that a trend or whatever? Purchase land along key quarters. Did you do that or did you just have conversations with people about it, right? Yes, we bought this land, check. And so this, this version, if you will, seems to give more demonstrative goals, right? I, I don't know if that, if that's something that you agree with or there's, I, did, did I miss? Maybe I, there, maybe there was too much meat and potatoes.
There was, there is, I was gonna say, there's a lot of information in, in, in version one that explains maybe why. You know, it talks about population, it gives some, it gives some stats, some information to explain possibly why we're moving towards this. This version gives me a clear goal of where we're heading without all the other. But this is also necessary as well. There was a lot of information that I, I found fascinating about why we're moving in the way that we are and how we compare to other cities. I found the information to be valuable. But this gives me a clear picture of where we're going, where we'd like to be, based on our conversation in the retreat.
And maybe I'm looking at it from, I, I agree. And, and maybe I'm looking at it from the perspective of a lot of these things we, we talk about all the time, you know? The threats and the opportunities and everything else. And maybe I'm not looking at it from the opportu- from the perspective of somebody out in town who's just reading it. And so maybe I'm, I'm, I'll use a term we use in the Navy, I'm nuking it, you know? I don't know, scientists and all those other people kind of overdo it, so, yeah. Yes, ma'am. Well, I don't know, you gotta ask the mayor.
Mayor, may I make a comment? Um, you know, we did our RFP and we followed EDA, that's Economic Development Administration Standards that are nationwide for development of a comprehensive economic development strategic plan. There's certain elements of that plan that we requested specifically in the RFP. We have done that with SEDS one, with SEDS two, and again with SEDS three. It's consistent from that standpoint of the RFP process and what is considered best practice by the Economic Development Administration. So I just wanted just to comment on that, that strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, along with some of the analysis they did, uh, development of target industries. All of those are part of that nationwide Economic Development Administration recommendation. It also calls for, you know, a, uh, steering committee, which we did follow too, in order to be able to get cross-sections throughout the community, participate in that. And we had very robust conversations as well there. So, the RFP actually called for, uh, those elements because they're standard and because that is, has been our practice, best practice was to deliver on a comprehensive economic development strategic plan. That said, the actual final plan that's presented is a result of all that work. So I'm, you know, it's a lot to wade through, but as Councilwoman, uh, Holiday just mentioned, it's enlightening. It's, but getting, uh, a more specific approach to the action items, I think, is what I'm hearing from council this evening. I just wanted to share that with you.
And I think it's just me, I get defensive when I see all the, the census numbers. I hate the current, current census numbers, I'll just put it out there because it doesn't reflect us because of COVID. I mean, we all know our city's bigger than what the census told us our, our city was and the numbers, the statistics are bigger. And so, I know you had, you only had that to work with and, but I guess I get defensive personally.
But again, that is a standard that's used by others outside of our community and us knowing what we are.
Yeah.
Uh, it's one thing, then picking a number out that's been prepared by the census is what happens. So, again, um, you know, we certainly appreciate the feedback from council and I think, um, most of this is all already incorporated, it's just more directive.
So, so this, this is trying to be a more concise version, it may or may not be embedded in, in all these pages. But I'm looking at Doug's notes and, and Doug's asking for, for more volumous, volumous.
Voluminous.
Voluminous report, right? Uh, I mean, there, there's, there's some pretty, uh, uh, definitive things here in terms of, quote, this feels entirely backwards.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Quote, what are they doing instead? Quote, I'm still not convinced. And, and so this is consistently proven to be a false narrative, right? I mean, there's, he, he, he does a, an excellent job of calling into question some of these things and, and the, the, the false narrative is, is, is a threat that was articulated perhaps by, uh, uh, someone who is wanting to paint a threat landscape that doesn't exist, right? Um, and so, but, but there's no defensive language or discussion language around that in terms of saying, well, this is what, you know, this community put forward, but there's no basis in fact. Or there's no, you know, it, it, there's no meat and potatoes to it as, as.
If we've based our strategy on.
Communities that were selected for the comparative, is that what you're?
If we base, exactly, if we base our strategy on false information, what do we get, right?
Well, I think we have to have comparative period. If we can't just look at our own community, we have to have clarity about the communities in order to see where we stand. And I think that was part of EDA standard as well. That is one of the techniques, so.
And if I'm not wrong, that was another complaint that Doug brought up in terms of some of the, some of the, the, the documentation that was referenced here, uh, was all local. I mean, there was no regional sort of, I mean, there was no regional, uh, information that was pulled in. I'm trying to figure out what page that was on.
Uh, yeah, that was, uh, unfortunately, the page numbers don't look great, but methodology.
Towards the.
Background review about.
It was in the meat and potato section of it, right?
Okay.
Um, maybe, well.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna examine those notes. I mean, there is an extensive data appendix with benchmarking to cities within the region, outside the region, and lots of data that went into this, pulled from the census, from, you know, some of the best-in-class data sources on this. But we will review all the comments and notes and double-check all that. You know, this is helpful for us. We always say, you know, to Amy's point about what a SEDS is and that definition, what we were asked to do. There is, you know, we say the processes is as important as the end result. And truthfully, getting there took a process, but it is helpful for us to have this so we can simply take this and use this as a model for.
And, and I agree that, I think you were following the scope of the RFP based on EDA standards or EDC standards and best practices. And I guess we don't like it.
Yeah, it's perfect. No, and that's what we need to hear, this is exactly part of the process.
This isn't the first one.
Yeah.
Right? This is the third go-round. And so maybe, maybe my personal expectations were higher. I don't know. Uh, but I, but I, when I was going through Doug's comments, I'm like, yes, yes, yes. And, and I don't ever agree with Doug on everything he says, but here I was agreeing with everything.
I'm sure there are some you don't, don't worry.
I'll, I'll look, I'll look, I'll look again, but, but I mean.
Don't look too hard.
I mean, it was, yeah.
I, I haven't reviewed them, so I can't speak for them.
I, I hear you, uh, but I, I, I would think we need to probably give them time to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful and I know, uh, obviously, we got three members here on the PCDC board. It's probably worthwhile for, uh, Amy, uh, to work with, uh, the folks from Ernst &amp; Young, um, and, uh, and the council members who are over there on the PCDC. And the City Manager's Office who drafted this, this piece.
I agree.
Uh, to come up with, you know, how we need to move it forward.
Mr. Rogers, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, you've been somewhat laid back on this. Any words of wisdom?
Uh, I'm, I'm just listening, I'm mostly, I'm agreeing with Doug.
Okay.
You got a big fan club today.
It's Mardi Gras.
It's Mardi Gras, yeah. Okay, so I think.
Been a roller coaster.
There's more work to be done and I think we need just to communicate.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Uh, do, 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 what's next?
Do we have a report on Rudy coming, is he over there?
Uh, I asked him and did he answer me? Yeah, he's coming back.
Okay.
Um, oh, discuss, uh, wait, wait, where are we?
So we're just, we're just gonna take no action?
Seven J. Discussing consideration regarding the city of Flugerville retail recruitment policy.
This item was requested and Councilman McDonald.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make sure that, that everyone had a chance to look at our, uh, uh, retail recruitment policy and, and understand if, um, we feel like, uh, our, our economic development arm or community development arm, PCDC is, is affecting that uh, in a way that, that, that we're happy with? Or if we need to take tighter control of that and, and reassign, uh, reassign responsibility of that in some way?
He made a narrative. Don't worry, don't worry.
Uh, I, I know that at our retreat, we talked a lot about, uh, uh, retail and, and retail strategies and it, and it seemed like there was, uh, some issues scattered around that. Um, so I thought we'd have an opportunity to talk about it.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I, I, I take the approach, where, where does the core competence exist? Uh, is retail recruitment better suited in, um, you know, some department in the city or, or with the PCDC?
Or with the Chamber of Commerce, right?
Or the Chamber of Commerce. Um, uh, and I, I do believe the PCDC has the skillset, the PCDC staff has the skillset necessary to execute on, uh, retail recruitment. Uh, I think we need to ensure we provide clear direction on, on what it is, uh, we desire from a, probably from a goals and a metrics perspective so that we can, uh, feel comfortable with the results. Cause I.
So one of, one of the, um, things I, I seem to stumble on whenever we talk about, about retail is that, uh, oh, well, we can't really focus on that because it's not primary jobs, right? Um, we can incentivize it, uh, we can't do anything, uh, monetarily because it falls outside the scope of a four B. That, that's, that's what I hear? That's not true?
Well, I, I'm not saying that, you're not saying something through, I'm just saying, I think there's some maybe, should I come?
Please.
Well, I think, I think it's important, you know, we can, we can incentivize, PCDC, a type B can incentivize retail from an infrastructure perspective. And then if there are, if there are certain recruitment tasks that we would like their staff to work on, there may be a way where, uh, you know, our, we can take some of our budget and say, hey, spend this twenty thousand dollars on staff time to go chase retail targets. Sorry. Um, you know, there, we can, we can also supplement funding if we need to, if it's outside the boundaries of what, uh, a four B, uh, funding can accommodate. So, there's no reason they can't do everything we want them to do. It all depends, you know, which, which pocket the money comes out of.
So, do you feel that the retail policy we have provides sufficient guidance to PCDC to accomplish those goals?
Is that a question of me or to everyone?
Everyone, I mean, e- everyone here participated in that re- retreat.
Uh, and, and I took a very specific direction on that retreat and I think we could have more specificity in what we are requesting of, uh, you know, targets. Uh, but just because I want, you know, uh, a Tomlinson's or a Chewie's or a Plucker's, uh, in town, doesn't mean everyone does. But, uh, you know, we can chase those or, or a Cotton Patch Cafe, anything that, uh, we think would be beneficial to the community.
Are, are you suggesting that you and I need to spend some time reviewing the policy and, and presenting a draft for the next meeting?
I don't know how I just talked my way into more.
Mayor Pro Tim, may I speak?
Of course.
Uh, if we go back in time a little bit and Ms. Madison, if I remember right, I believe, um, council and PCDC worked well together to establish that retail policy. We, um, we definitely had conversations about who should do what and where it should go. So, um, if you wanted any of our input, if y'all decide to do that, we'd be happy to share with you kind of the history on that.
History.
I wasn't asked, but I am comfortable with the way the policy is written today. I think providing direction is, um, always critical in communicating, um, the needs that we, that we want.
Yeah, and I, Doug had just said that and I think that's, that's paramount because if we don't provide that direction, I mean, we even had that, that conversations with you and, 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 you know, we gotta give you the, the, the correct direction so that you can go forward with it. I think that's our responsibility to deal with the PCDC as well. So maybe, maybe you might have to revise this.
So, Serene, I didn't understand, do you, do you feel like there is sufficient specificity in the policy? Or do you, do you, I mean?
Can you give me an example? Cause I really thought there was.
Okay.
Sure.
Well, I mean, that's.
We had some talk at the, at the retreat about various specific, uh, retail, um, that, uh, the members of the council are, are interested in. Um, uh, have we done any kind of a general survey of the residents to get their feedback on this? I mean, I, I know we all hear periodically, I would like a fill-in-the-blank.
Honestly, are, are you asking, are you particularly, what I, I guess, let me back up after that. Are you asking what the residents feel about PCDC and their role in recruitment or what do they feel about recruitment? I mean, uh, retail.
What, what businesses are our residents requesting?
Yeah, what do our residents think we need? I mean, cause it, if we don't know where we're going, we're not gonna get there.
The only part about that is, that I hesitate on is because, I'll go back to the, our last joint meeting with the ISD and somebody mentioned that we're getting a Hobby Lobby. I s- I heard possibly four people complaining and say, I don't want a Hobby Lobby, I want a Michael's. You know, so, I mean, I don't think you're ever gonna please anybody when you take that kind of survey.
Well, I.
You can, you can factor that down into.
To get an idea of what the residents think we need. I mean, maybe they were, you know, I mean, it's unlikely, but it's possible the residents think we have everything we need right there in Stone Hill. Um, it's much more likely that they will have specific things that they want, uh, specific types of businesses that they feel like, uh, like we're missing in Flugerville, they have to go to the domain for or what have you. I'd like to know what the citizens want rather than, I mean, it's great to hear what the other six people on the council want, but, uh, I'm not sure that that should inform all of our retail strategy.
Well, you asked me what I thought. I appreciate that, um, when they asked me in the retreat what I wanted, I said a plus size clothing store. I know that's not what everyone wants, but I would like a Toret, right? But it is very important to hear what the citizens want, not just what we want. And so I wanna hear what our citizens want, so I can come back and report.
Well, I think that when we ask citizens, or even when we, you know, look on social media, Facebook, and they hear about something going up and asking questions, well, I want this, I want that. It's, you know, I, I, I think it's good to get that information, but there are a lot of factors in whether or not we can even pull that through with, you know, availability of space, uh, uh, and, and whether developers or property owners are willing to sell space for that particular project. Uh, franchising questions, uh, I, I don't think it's easy to bring a business to Flugerville. I, I mean, I know it's not, it's not.
It, uh, I'm not saying we can fulfill everybody's wish list, but it would be nice to know what is the wish list. Uh, I, I understand that there was a rumor out there that there was a Hooters coming to town, and that's not actually true.
Somebody, I heard somebody laughing, somebody out there has heard that rumor. But, you know, if there are a lot of people in Flugerville that want that to be true, I, I'd like to know. If there are a lot of people in Flugerville who are, you know, adamantly opposed to that, I'd like to know.
Inquiring minds wanna know.
So maybe the, maybe the, the, the place to start is with a, a, a project by the PCDC to survey the citizens. We, I mean, we do, you know, uh, surveys for the citizens all the time. I mean, I, how many meetings do we have for the twenty forty Aspire Plan? Um, I, I think of this as a subset of that sort of citizen effort.
Well, to that point, I mean, this, this retail policy is over a year old, right?
Right.
Um, September, what, twenty-two? And it says here, uh, the, under the, the section three for the PCDC, it says to establish target industries and expansion progress. We haven't done that survey to figure out what those targets are. You know, do people want steak restaurants, or they, or they want more?
More chicken.
More chicken, right? Uh, and then, and then the next line here is, you know, encourage development of spec buildings and pad sides. And so. My problem with, my problem with that is that I can check that box, right? I encouraged the development of that, and we had a bunch of developers up here saying, hey, we wanna build a, a lifetime fitness, right? We, but, but we didn't, because it wasn't what we wanted. And so, so I'm, I'm concerned that the verbiage in here, and, and, you know, that, that doesn't have enough specificity without, without calling out a Michaels or a Chick-fil-A or whatever that business is, right? But, but to have some, the, the wording here is, in my opinion, it, it's, it's vague. It lets me say, well, yeah, we, we had those conversations and encouraged that, but a year from, a year later, I, I don't know if, if I asked for a report on how we met any of these goals, if we would have anything other than, uh, uh, transcripts of conversations that were had over the last year. And maybe that's too much of an expectation.
Maybe, maybe that life cycle in terms of recruiting these businesses is longer than that.
Generally speaking, I would expect it to be. Well, I mean, I think there's strategies to get there quicker if we're willing to make the investment. And, um, you know, I, I think a lot of developers that come before us say, oh yeah, we're gonna build this, and we're gonna have retail over here, and they may just throw in a Jack in the Box or whatever. Well, that's, okay, it's retail, kinda, sorta. Uh, or, you know, a nail salon, that's not really nail, uh, retail. But some type of service business that they weren't interested in putting anything there to begin with. I mean, and I think whether it's PCDC or the city of Flugerville that says, okay, we have a retail district zone. And this is what we're gonna do to incentivize, uh, opportunities there. And then we reach out through PCDC or we create our own, you know, retail services coordinator within the city. And their objective is to bring whatever the citizens want to our city.
And it does seem like when, when people talk about, and this is, you know, my, my observation. It seems like when people talk about retail, it's always centered around our retail center, which is Stone Hill. And we talked about it in the retreat, right? You don't necessarily wanna go after one thing. You wanna create an environment where multiple things can be successful. But here we are investing hundreds of million dollars, of millions of dollars in our downtown area. I haven't heard about the retail strategy for, for downtown, right? Uh, and, and so, uh, I don't know if that's just me not listening. Uh, or, or I'm not part of those conversations, or I, I don't know. But it seems like, in, in my, uh, opinion, it seems like we haven't really followed through with this retail proli- policy to, to an extent that, that I would like to, like to see. And I don't know how to correct that, and so I thought we'd talk about it. Or, or if y'all feel we don't, it's fine, I'm, I'm overreacting, we need to leave it alone. Well, let's have that conversation, and I'll go.
No, no.
Right?
You know, you hear the stories of places that wanna come here, but Stone Hill won't allow it because there's a particular business that's similar to that there. Uh, you know, we hear about, you know, South Lake Meadows, right?
Like, uh, Lakeside.
Lakeside Meadows, I keep saying the one down in Austin.
South Park Meadows.
Uh, you know, they're supposed to have some kind of a big retail area. You know, it's hard because we only have so much space and we need that acre there too, you know?
Well, and when the HEB comes in there, it's, it's adjacent to that property. Uh, that, they're gonna bring a whole bunch of retail with them, right? There'll be another liquor store, another vape shop, and another.
December.
Right, another UPS store, I mean, I could list the stores that are gonna be there. That are, we already have, right? There'll be a dry cleaners, there'll be a pizza joint, right? I know exactly that there, there'll be a smoothie joint, uh, hopefully there'll be another. Lobe T joint, cause I really like those. I know exactly the twenty businesses will fit inside that. Um, i- i- is that all we want? I mean, do we have a strategy that, that supersedes that? I mean, I, I don't know, I just feel like, you know, I was talking with somebody the other day. Uh, and I, and I, and I, I told them how proud I was of our city because we have one of the most diverse communities in the country, right? We made a list somewhere. And I told them that our diversity is, 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 is based on, uh, race, ethnicity, uh, age, veteran versus non-veteran, socioeconomic in- incomes. Our diversity is measured on multiple tiers. And, and, and I'm very, very proud of our community. And, and when I think about that and how we're serving them, I feel that we could do a better job with our retail strategy. Now, whether that's creating a more specific document, whether that's calling for a report on this, uh, to, uh, quarterly to measure benchmarks and establishing those. I'm, I'm willing to have that conversation, but, but if we're gonna complain about our retail not meeting our desires, then it's on us to do something about it. And that's why I wanted to have this conversation.
So I, I think what I see missing from, from the policy, um, is probably very much along the lines of what Mr. Rogers was, uh, uh, was discussing, proposing.
Agreeing with him then?
Of course.
I was agreeing with him earlier, it could go both ways.
To, to the extent that, you know, do we need to specifically, um, you know, have community engagement? Whole our community, what, what is it we need? Those, those, uh, diverse communities that we have. I may not know the stores that some of those folks would like to shop at. I need to ask them, uh, what, what type of grocery store, what type of restaurant? What, what stores do we need that I don't even know exist? So I feel like, I feel like I need a, an action item in the policy that says, go do the survey. Um, staff also provided me with this, uh, uh, this website from the city of Keller, uh, that has, uh, I guess they did a, they did a study, they list their, um, the businesses that requested that they ruled out for one reason or another, uh, that, uh, they've had to, um, that they, they no longer pursue because they've been turned down and the reason they've been turned down. And, uh, they list their recent successes, the businesses that they did recruit because someone asked for it. Uh, and that they were able to go out and say, hey, you know, much like we did, uh, you know, we've heard the story of our, uh, healthcare initiative. Uh, we went out and we said, hey, we need this, and then we went out and told everyone they needed to come. Uh, we, we can go out and say, hey, we need this set of retail, uh, businesses and convince them that we're the right community for them.
And, and so, I agree with you in part.
I'm not wrong.
You're, you're not wrong. And, and so, but, but. A complaint that we had on, on, uh, on the SEDS document was that was, it's exactly your point there in terms of, um, what's the comment I'm thinking about?
It, it's, it needs to be policy, not, uh, action, right?
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'd, I'd rather, rather than being specific, you know, yes, we have a, all be checkbox, you know, right? Yes, we have a, a taco shop or whatever, right? Check, in, in, instead of being specific. Uh, who's this guy? Somebody checked his security.
He looks vaguely familiar.
For the record.
Nine oh six.
And so I, I don't know, I don't know if that's the precise answer, uh.
I, I don't know that it needs to be in the policy. It's something that perhaps is already covered within the policy.
Well, I don't see any benchmarking in the policy.
Well, I, you know, I, I think Jim made a good point a while ago, and I'll go back, I'll revert to what I've said in the past that when we talked about, uh, Cabo Bob's, Rudy remembers that conversation. And how, uh, um, I said that I spoke to the owner of Cabo Bob's, and, uh, they're not sure that Flugerville was ready for them. And Doug made the comment later on that, well, that maybe it's high tide, we recruited these people, or maybe we don't have to prove it anymore, you know, we are ready, we need to recruit them, we need to go out there and show them that we're ready, or something of that.
Show, show them the median household income.
Maybe they don't believe it.
The disposable income.
So who do we send out, going back to your point, Jim? I think, you know, who do we send out? Do we task PCDC, the city, both? I think that's, you know, the question of, of where we could kinda make some changes in this policy of, hey, it's time to go out there and start asking.
If I, if I may, can I make a recommendation? Um, maybe a lunch and learn with the retail company, they're the experts, not, not myself, not Amy. The retail company that we currently contract, PCDC contracts with, uh, retail strategies. Um, that's a different company than the last lunch and learn, but maybe bring them in. That's why we have a new company, um, with us, and maybe they could come. And, um, I, I think that they could answer a lot of these questions.
They can tell us how to give what we want.
They're the experts.
Give this policy to them and articulate that, that at least I would like to see, there's seven objectives that are outlined in, in here, or seven goals. And, and I'd like to understand how they're meeting, have met those goals or are intending to meet those goals.
I have April fifteenth open or May fifth for a lunch and learn, and we'll contact them and see if they'd like to come. Sure, sure, sure.
Absolutely.
We should make sure we have at least three of the board members there.
Instead of us trying to pontificate on what we think, maybe they, I think.
I, I agree, but I, I guess, I wanted to have this conversation here with everyone to see if everyone wants to carry that torch forward. Uh, cause, cause there was a lot of, there was a lot of talk in the, in the retreat, and I didn't want that to die until a year later when we were at the retreat saying, hey, we had this conversation, what did we do? Well, we didn't articulate a policy and a strategy to, to, to accomplish those goals. So, look, thank you for having this discussion. And, and I think a lunch and learn with retail strategies is, and, and with our PCDC board members and staff present is absolutely the right idea.
Yeah.
Sound like a plan.
Thanks.
All right. So do we need to vote on that? Is this a take action?
I'm just a staff direction item.
Already done.
All right. Uh, let's go back to, uh, before we go on to the, uh, PCDC budget priorities. The legislative committee item, Trista, which was that, uh, seven E.
Seven, seven E. I discussed consider action to approve a resolution appointing a city council legislative subcommittee.
We didn't want to take any action without.
Oh, yeah.
No, we didn't.
Off of the hard spot on this right here. So we got four people, Rudy, four people who want it.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to support whatever you wanna do with this.
I think we should have them go up there and like, uh, when we, we do have the other.
What's your pitch?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I, I think that's important to, one, figure out what we, we, I mean, right now is the time we should be talking about what our legislative agenda should be for the next year. And then two, um, who's willing to look at and review our previous strategies and our previous partners? Um, and see if that's still the same pathway that the council would like to go moving forward with that.
So you're incorporating another element there?
Yeah. When did we, uh?
Well, there's four interested parties, that's a quorum. So I don't know, Mr. Rogers, I don't think you have issue with quorums.
Uh, you know, I mean, that means every time the subcommittee meets, we have to, we have to post it, we have a, you know, we have open records.
But that's never, that's, that's. That's called Tuesday.
Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that, that's not a problem, and the public should be able to see if we have a conversation about that. I have no problems with that, that's, the discussion is that, you know, there's four people who are interested in it. But I don't think it's an issue about posting, we do that all the time.
I guess the, to, to David's point, uh, the question is, is are, are the discussions of the subcommittee public information? Or, or are they part of ours?
Mr. Attorney.
Well, documents, if, any document created by the subcommittee is gonna be an open record regardless of whether or not it's a quorum creating the document or not. If you do have four people on the subcommittee, you do have to post and comply with the Texas.
Yeah, and we're gonna have walk-in quorums all the time.
No, we're not.
No, that's no.
If there are four people on the subcommittee and the four people are talking.
Why would they be?
I, I think it, I think it makes the most sense to leave the subcommittee at two.
At.
At two people.
At two?
Yeah.
Well, I'd, I would very much like to serve with Rudy on this.
This why? Rudy, yeah.
Well, we, we wanted to give you the opportunity to serve.
We, we got four.
Well, and I, we're assuming, Rudy, are, are you interested in serving on the legislative?
I, I am interested in serving, I'm also interested in supporting. So, I mean, because, I mean, you, you, there's, there's some of us, you, you know, while being, you mean, different areas, capacities engaged. I think that, I do think that we do need to go back and look at, like I said, what our priorities are for next session. And then, do we wanna continue our strategies that we've utilized before? I think those are two key port, components with that as well. Um, you know, but, yeah, I'm, I'm okay if y'all wanna put, I mean, David, David doesn't, fair, David doesn't serve on any other committees. Um, you know, if y'all wanna put someone else, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'll support whatever y'all wanna do on this, cause you know I'll be involved and, and help out.
I love to hear it. All right, I would like to, um, recommend, uh, David Rogers and, um, Mayor Pro Tim for the, uh, appointment for the council legislative commit- committee with Rudy's full support.
Consideration.
My bad, I take it back.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I forgot about Jim.
Jump right in there.
I mean, and, and Jim, and Jim was involved previously, last session. So as long as Jim and David don't go Tupac on each other, I'm okay with them working on that, cause we'll come back. It's me, but like I said, there's some things that we do need to get organized, but.
So.
I think Jim and I worked, worked well together last time.
You just picked Rudy, now you, you ditching Rudy?
No, I'm just saying nice things about you.
So Ms. Holliday, your motion is to appoint. You did?
Because of Jim.
I, I forgot about, I forgot Jim was interested as well.
So, so I tell you what, I'll, I'll move to appoint, uh, Mr. Rogers, Mr. McDonald to the legislative committee.
I love that, second.
Who is Mr. Rogers and who?
Mr. McDonald.
I really thought he said Ms. McConnell.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And you're gonna support as well.
Mitch's wife?
Okay, did we get a second on that?
We did.
I, I think I got like fourths.
And you're gonna be supportive as well.
We will, we will be very supportive. We will, we will be very supportive.
We, we worked well on that together last time.
We'll do our best to keep them in line.
Along that, with that, for discussion merit, I think, yeah, we need, we maybe should review at some point.
Too late.
They're working together and fighting with one another.
Well, let, let's be clear that the, the resolution. The, the resolution does say that staff will provide a periodic report to city council regarding the committee. So.
There you go.
I think that satisfies your. So if it ain't going well, let us know.
Did you even say, she said, sure we will.
Sure we will.
Well, we, we mentioned it now, so we know it's in there.
Yeah, okay, got it? And we waited for you.
That was awesome.
All right, item.
Like all day?
Where are we? Seven, seven L, is that correct, Trista?
Okay.
I believe. Okay, oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Discussion regarding Flugerville Community Development Corporation budget priorities.
So this was really an opportunity, the council meets with us in January to do a retreat and helps us articulate. When I think about budget, I don't typically think, and that doesn't sound very good, hang on, let me retract. When I think about budgets, I think about what we value, what we believe in, where we put our oomph into what we believe. So I'm not here to say we need exact dollar amounts, or that's not the kind of budget that I think PCDC deserves to hear, but maybe more about where would you want them to focus? As they start preparation for their budget, how could you help inform them on where you think those, those buckets of funds should go? Should it be?
I think we agreed last time, or, or, um, works, or retreat land banking.
That's one, I think I've heard that, yep.
I'm the original land banker, so I, I got no problems with that at all.
The OG land banker.
It was.
So.
But also, you know, the recruitment is, 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 you know, I think that's the, the primary mission. But the land banking is a huge, a huge part of making that mission possible. I mean, you know, if we're going to recruit somebody, they want to say, well, where, where do we go? I think those things are hand in hand.
Now, I think the other budget priority I would want to voice, and I think I, I heard it since we just talked about the retail recruitment, is that I'd like to see investment in infrastructure that supports retail.
You know, we've talked, we've talked in and around that for years. We have, so I will avoid naming names of other cities, cities around us who have literally put money into infrastructure and built ways for retail spaces. Or just built, you know, office space, I, I completely agree, I think that we need to build it and I think we can, and I think that allows for us to, to get a lot of things that we like.
So it seemed like at the retreat, when we were talking about budget policies, it seemed like there was more specific discussion in terms of how we would affect those budget policies. And I don't hear anybody echoing that, are those?
Remind me.
Does anyone have, no, he's right.
No, there, there was, there was specific discussion about moving the PCDC finance department.
Oh.
In, into the city department so that we could build the budget cohesively and, and, and parallel at the same time. Is, is that still something that we want to have a conversation about?
I think that's five T.
That was.
I think that's five T.
It's pulled off consent.
I, I remember talking about that, I, I don't, I, but I remember that we did, I, I do not remember us coming to a consensus of that. I remember it being an, an active discussion item. You know, I'd like to, I'd like to hear. Well, I think. As a body.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, isn't that an item that was pulled?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was part of your BLT.
I don't have that.
Oh, look at that, there it is down there, never mind, I'm, I'm ahead an item.
Yeah, we're, we're getting, I, I, I mean, that's, that's more administrative expenses. Was there anything more specific about the budget or was that the, your main recollection, Mr. McDonald?
Sorry, I'm getting caught up with the pulled item. I really need to make the font bigger or get stronger glasses. Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess my understanding of, of, of the budgetary process was, was to take, take tighter control of it. And so I didn't realize that we, we divided up those and certainly didn't realize it was on consent, so. Either I would like to. Jump and postpone this item until we can discuss the other one or open both of them at the same time, is that what you can?
Can.
Well, I can't.
Well, let me do it. So that's, yeah, five T, item five T approving an agreement between the Flugerville Community Development Corporation and City of Flugerville regarding administrative and supportive services.
Yeah, tell me, what's that about?
So I guess I, I skipped that, cause it was, I didn't, I didn't review it, what is this, what is this agreement?
Sure, we can give a summary if you like.
Please.
On five T, sure.
Thank you.
Um, James or Tracy?
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, Speaker of the House. So this is, this is the agreement that we've had in place for a few years now and we've, we've made some modifications to it. The, the key one is that instead of providing financial support, we would provide full financial services. And what that means is, is that like, like other city department functions, very similar to that, to where our finance team would have access to the account funds. And would, would be building the budget along with, with the leadership of PCDC. You know, it'd just be greater collaboration, full, full services. That would also eliminate the need for separate auditing, separate budget software, it would just be another fund within the city's overall budget. So that's what you'll see reflected.
So James, what you're saying is you're trying to get rid of redundancies?
Uh, yes, sir.
So how would that work of, I mean, I know that, that Amy's got discretionary spending and, and she sees a, you know, cool little widget for twenty seven thousand dollars that she just have to have. She goes, writes a check for it. How, would that, how, how would that affect this policy?
So, so as far as like day-to-day operations, it would be pretty seamless, right? The only difference is that behind the scenes, it's going through our purchasing, like there's a requisition process that it goes through, so it would flow and checks would get cut this same way as if a communications director wanted to procure a software or something. It would just go through the same city processes. And when you talk about redundancies, Councilman, so, so right now, for example, we, we are invoiced for payroll monthly. And so we invoice.
You're invoiced from PCDC?
So we, we sent an invoice to PCDC and they were meant payment every month for payroll, cause we handle payroll. If they were another fund that we had access to, we could just transfer that money. So they would get paid directly out of their accounts, for example. And so it's just, it's just kind of taking an extra layer out and just really kind of combining that extra money.
Is that happening just with payroll or is there any other transactions that?
So it, it would be, it would be all purchasing and procurement would flow through our processes, so they would. Yeah, so like they would be in our Tyler Munis, our ERP system. So, so Tracy and her team would go through the process of building up the fund within Munis, they'd build out their fund within ClearGov, which is the budgeting software. And so all the reports that you'd see, the, the quarterly reports and so forth, they would match the, the city's format. And so it'd all be, you know, very in line with what we do.
I have a question. Has PCDC, are they aware of this? Have we talked about this with them other than tonight or is this new for them tonight to hear the potential plan?
This is new for them, this is a, this is a reflection of the, the council retreat discussion.
Is there an opportunity to have a conversation with them to talk about that?
They're here.
Here?
Well, but they're.
Amy's right there.
Okay, I, I mean, and I guess in all fairness, I feel more like, I don't know, in, in a different setting where it can be a conversation, a dialogue. And then the other thing would be, does this eliminate any jobs?
It does not, what, what we would suggest as part of this is transferring that FTE to the city. So there wouldn't be a loss of a job.
All right.
So, so our standard practice from a council perspective, my understanding is we, we countersign the documents, right? We don't, we don't make offers when we make contracts. So you're telling me that the PCDC board has not seen the amendments to the agreement, has not reviewed, has not provided any input, has not approved, and this would, it seems like we're, we're going a little out of order.
Unlike that.
If we approve this tonight and they say, oh, no thanks, then that puts us in a rather awkward position.
So I would say this is, this is, so last time you amended this agreement, it went in this order. It's, it's your EDC.
It did.
It is.
Well, no, I don't think that was wrong.
No, no, you, you do it first and then they approve it.
Because like Doug said, if they, if they don't approve.
They don't approve it, then what? Then we, then we fire everyone on PCDC and start over?
That seems like a bad precedent, oh, wait.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's that complicated of a process.
I mean, I would hope that it's not that, that adversarial, right? But I would like them to have the opportunity to provide feedback and to tell us if this, cause what I'm hearing is that we will be providing them with a, a higher level of service. We'll be able to take some of the load off of the things that they do and, and make things run more seamlessly and help them more. And if that's the case, I want them to go and take a look at this, say, oh, yeah, that, that sounds like a great idea. I don't know what I'm missing, I'm not working at it from that perspective, but I do want to have that feedback from them before we, I would want to have that feedback from them before we autograph this.
I'm also curious how this affects the, our. Our debt accounting. James, the, the city can only issue so much debt, bonds, general obligation bonds and, and certificates of obligations. My understanding is that the, the PCDC has a certain amount of debt. Would this then be transferred onto the city's books? How does that work? Is that, is that then limit our ability to, to issue for the future CEOs or GOs?
They remain a separate corporation, all that stuff stays intact, this is purely administrative.
PCDC debt is already on the city books.
Yeah.
We, we issue their debt and they, they pay us a, at least for the CEOs.
For the rec centers too, yeah.
For the, for the rec center, for the roadwork, for, yeah. They, they do also have loans, but the CEOs are already on the city's books with an agreement that they pay the debt service on the city's books. So, so the CEOs are already on the city's books.
Yeah, and I was about to say, some of.
That's interesting.
It's illusionary in nature, but the reality of it is that, yeah, we're, we're responsible for those things, for those.
But, but what, what do the net rating agencies look at?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think, I think the.
Debt and revenue.
At, at least, at least to me, I mean, and James, I don't, like, I, I mean, I'm not faulting at all for presenting this. I'm kind of surprised that, I mean, we give out our agendas and our items, we put out our things on Friday, so technically speaking, they've had an opportunity to, to look at it, but they haven't had the opportunity to discuss it. And that's the part where I'm like, okay, you know, having this, I mean, I don't think it's going to kill us to, when's, when's your meeting?
Wednesday.
Oh.
Not, not this Wednesday.
No, it's two.
Week from Wednesday.
Two weeks from Wednesday, so it's not until after our next council meeting.
So we bumped this to meetings and.
That's right.
Then bring it back to, back, back for our consideration then.
I mean, what happens for, from your standpoint, that's the time frame matter, okay? I mean, that's the, that's the only thing I think about.
We're not eminently in budget season yet, we still have enough runway.
We're getting in the budget season, but it's okay.
We have enough runway to get it integrated into our system before budgets are approved.
I, I think even if you, we'll, we'll be fine, we'll work through it.
The, I guess the, the, the main reason I wanted to open this item up in conjunction with, with the budget is how will, how will doing this, right? How, how we're moving that, that finance component inside city offices or however we're articulating that? How does that impact the budgetary process? Do then, do we then create the budget internally in the city and invite PCDC staff to participate with city staff as we create that budget? Or do we, do we, do we draft it and send it to PCDC and say, this is the draft that PCDC finance department came up with? I mean, there's some specifics there.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, from that, from a functional standpoint, nothing much is going to change. The difference is, is now finance has access and they're kind of driving that, right? They're, they're steering ClearGov, they're building out the components, they're generating the reports and feeding that information.
Establishing the account codes.
Yeah, the whole PCDC team will be in the room for those budgets, not like, from that standpoint, it's not going to change.
They, they still establish the, the budget priorities and the direction and.
Yeah, they're still very independent in that regard.
Okay, which, which would make it different from any of our standard departments that we have over here, because they're still a separate entity from that.
They, they get their approval from us as opposed to the departments that get their.
We're just, we're just providing a survey.
Yeah. Okay.
And the city can't just go dipping into those funds, right?
Oh, no.
There's a valid concern right here that I would state that.
Oh, I got a checkbook?
Yeah, really, if, if, if we don't go through the board, like Doug was suggesting, and have the board at least look at it first and we make this decision.
I guarantee you, all of David's friends are going to be saying, see, they're superseding their authority again and they're going out there for a money grab. No, they will, I mean, I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm just, or they're right, but they're going to say that and it's going to leave us with egg on our face, like we're still recovering from that last person we let go. You know, people out there are still, I, I just want to do things, I'll use the word copacetically, I want to follow the process. And I think having the board look at it first is that first process, I know you don't agree, but. Are you gonna read? Huh? Are you gonna read it? You're the board.
Yes.
I know, I'm on the board, but what are you talking about?
We're talking about, you're saying that have the board look through the process, like I think we're, I think we all.
Discuss it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's, well, I'm one of seven, so there's.
Let me just say also, I don't think we need to worry about David's friends, you know? They didn't vote for us anyway, so who gets the damn?
That is not true.
All right, all right, all right. All right, so I don't, I don't think I need to do a call to question or anything else, I think we can just say, bring the item back and, what'd you say, two meetings?
It's gotta be at least two meetings, yeah.
Yeah, I think, because of the way the, the, the meeting timelines run up.
So, so, before, before you, you jump the gun there, or jump whatever, is, is that, I mean, the last time we changed their policy or for this, are we doing? We, we did it, right? Because ultimately, who's responsible? We are, we are. And so, and so there's, there's no confusion as to. Taking advantage of someone. This is our job, sir.
I know, I know.
And so, and so in my opinion, right, we set the benchmark and we send it to PCDC board and we have the discussion there. And we find out if they agree or not, and they don't agree, it comes back to us and then we can, we have a couple of paths we can follow, right? We can say, oh, wow, they brought up some really valid points that we didn't think about.
Yeah.
And we need to recraft this, thank you. Or we can say, they're off the rocker and we need to take other action, right? But, but I don't think it's going to come to that, my, my, my feeling is that we're putting a, a stake in the ground, right? We're setting the, we're setting the policy and we're sending it to PCDC board and, and asking them, do you concur? Is this a policy that, that works for you? Have we, have we thought about all of the unintended consequences and do you accept this? And then we're done, we move forward, no one's co-opting anybody else, we're just establishing the direction of our city that we want.
I see your point. I may not fully.
I think we are, we are sending it to them to look at it and they will either say yes, or they'll say yes, but. Or they'll conceivably say no, but, you know, then we're countersigning it and as Doug says, that, that really should be the protocol.
Right, so, so for me, this is about relationships and I think they should just, I hope that they. Right, so, so for me, this is about relationships, um, and I think they should just, I hope that they will have buy-in with us on this, but I think that they should just be given the opportunity to have a, a conversation, and that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I think we're all the same. I don't think we need to.
I think we're mostly on the same page.
I, I think they under, majority, well, I mean, yeah.
So we'll send this over to, um, the board and they can.
It'll be on their next agenda.
Yeah, chew on it and get it back to us. Okay, that was five, uh, tea, we were still on priorities, I think.
Do we have to vote on it to send it over to them? What's the action on this?
Because the vote would be that you're agreeing with what it says.
Right.
Yeah.
You're agreeing that in principle, that you like the changes.
Right.
I don't know that I do.
Do we, do we want to have a vote that we're sending it to the PCDC?
Did you agree with all the changes in there?
If we need that, we can do it, but.
Yeah, well, have you, do you agree with everything that's in that policy? I mean, we haven't really had that discussion, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to have that discussion until we have them have that discussion.
Exactly.
So I don't think it's appropriate for us to say, hey, we want you to do this.
Let's let this, let, let's let the smees look at it, and then, you know, take their, their advice into, into uh, consideration and our deliberations.
What was that word he used?
Subject matter expert.
Just making fun of me.
Smees, they're a Dr. Seuss character.
Will you stop?
Trista, would you help me understand where we are, please? I think we gotta go back to five K.
Yes, so the budget priorities item is still open unless you wish it closed.
So I think, I think we should, I don't need, I think I need to make a mo, movement for that, a motion for that. We just.
Well, it's just discussion.
Well, yeah.
So we, we.
Yeah, there's no.
Seven K. There's no action, right? But did we, did we thoroughly flesh out, I mean, we, we articulated, I think, three.
Three items, yeah.
Three budget focuses that we'd like to see.
Land banking, recruitment, infrastructure that supports retail is what I have.
Yep, that's what I heard too.
We're all the same page?
Hey, we didn't vote on blah, 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 blah.
Wait, what's that? Wait, what was that? Land, land baking, what? Retail strategies?
Recruitment.
Recruitment.
Infrastructure that supports retail.
I gotta type, I type slow, man. Recruitment, I'm used to voice to text now, it's ruined me. Alright. Alright, so I think we're still. So where are we now? Are we on?
We are on items pooled.
Consent.
So five, five B?
BLRT. BLR.
We, we did that in work session.
BLR.
Five B.
Okay, five B.
Just barely.
Would you read it, please?
Five B is approving a professional services agreement with Economic and Planning Systems Inc. in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars for professional services associated with a fiscal analysis study to assist with annexation decision-making and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So, I'd like a, a, a presentation. What is this and why do we need it?
Sure, this was the follow-up from the retreat to take a look at the fiscal impact of, um, looking into the ETJ. So we discussed in the retreat having a financial impact, and this is the scope of services to do that work.
Okay.
And these are, are these the people?
Go ahead, briefly.
These are the people.
Jeremy Pizella playing Development Services Director. So this was the item that we talked about, and we have, we've had multiple conversations about trying to look at, how do we move out to the ETJ and, and going eastward out towards nine seventy-three? The first item that we were directed towards was to look at fiscal impact analysis, and so we've, we've gone through a large, uh, time of of looking for the right consultant. We feel like we found that person, found that group to be able to help us with this. Um, so it's Economic and Planning, um, Services Incorporated. Matt Prosser is here. He can also answer any questions.
Oh, so that is the guy.
Yes.
So why, why are these guys the right guys?
Why don't you have him speak?
Yes, uh, Mayor, Council, um, and City Manager, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Matt Prosser, I'm a principal with Economic and Planning Systems. We're a land use economics firm. Um, I'm based in our Denver office. Uh, I've been working in, uh, Texas for over fifteen years on land use and economic development issues, um, including looking at annexation policy and growth management strategies, um.
What other cities have you done this for?
Uh, specifically helped San Antonio over the last six years.
That's a pretty big ETJ.
Yeah. I manage that. I'm currently working, uh, with the city of El Paso on their comprehensive plan, which includes.
Another big ETJ?
Yes, uh, both the fiscal impact analysis as well as annexation policy, so those would, and also worked on San Marcos, uh, comprehensive plan, which included, um, fiscal impact analysis as well as growth policy development.
Now, San Marcos just recently had a, a very large disannexation from their ETJ, isn't that right?
Yes, yes, they did.
And, and, and were you, uh, part of helping them deal with that?
No, I was not.
Um, so you're, you're up to date on all the latest, um, help that we're getting from the legislature on annexation and disannexation?
Uh, yes, uh, as much as I can be. It's an ever-changing landscape, as you know. Um, but yeah, that's part of the reason I've worked with San Antonio for the last six years is as soon as one policy is created, uh, new state legislature comes through with different, different, um, laws and curtailing of different powers of cities.
So do you enjoy working in Texas or are you stayed on masochist?
I know, I enjoy working here. It's, uh, it's, um, it's a nice reprieve, um, from the cold to come down.
And the air has more oxygen. Matt?
Yes.
Do, uh, in, in, in this new landscape of Texas annexation, do spas still play uh, an important role, or, and are there other?
Bless you.
Are there other, uh, uh, instruments that are, that are at play that, that, that fit the landscape?
Yes, I, I think, uh, all forms of partnership agreements that, um, can help address, uh, the management of urban development, uh, within unincorporated portions of the county, or, of, you know, of the county are important, so uh, whether that's a, a special partnership agreement, or an inter-local or inter-governmental agreements, or the use of different special districts, um, which would also incorporate the use of the private sector within those are important, um, components. I think that's one thing that we realized in our work is the importance of partnerships, both with your municipal partners, uh, with the counties, as well as private development. Uh, private developers and landowners to be able to effectively manage growth, given your inability to really control uh, some of what occurs on the edges of your community.
Uh, and do you have familiarity with, uh, non-ex, non-annexation agreements?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, and, uh, sort of, uh, you know, one thing is the ramifications of what happens at the end of the period of those non-annexation agreements and what sort of liabilities that might create for the city down the road once they've expired. Uh, San Antonio is a good example. They have a lot of non-annexation agreements that, you know, are thirty years. And what happens when those expire and then there's a trigger perhaps for the city to be able to or be required to? I think there's a little bit of, um, gray area in terms of what exactly the requirement is. And so that's a challenge, and I think, uh, part of this study was understanding some of those pros and cons, and then some of those risks and liabilities that you take on considering, uh, annexing developed or undeveloped areas and what, uh, sort of challenges with, uh, partnership agreements, uh, or allowing or consenting to muds or, or different special districts may have.
And then my last question for, for now at least, uh, and so, uh, with this new, as, as David mentioned, uh, uh, areas now have the ability to, to de-annex, uh, themselves under certain conditions. Do you have, do you have experience? You said you got to San Marcos Lake and didn't work involved with that one. Have you been through one of those and you have experience there?
No, I don't actually. Um, so it's sort of a new world, it's sort of understanding what the ramifications are. Um, so yeah, working through those challenges, uh, will be something that definitely would have to be considered in this.
I think it'll be key also, um, just give mine, two cents on that. To see about our ability to utilize and leverage our partnerships with our, the counties as well on this, because I know what's happening in Williamson County is that any cities that are being annexed, the counties said that they will not improve those roads and, and bond those roads right there, and leveraging whatever assets and abilities we have to entice people to stay in as opposed to leaving those things.
Yeah.
So I, I'd like to just throw, you know, my expectations at you, make sure, um, I understand if that's, uh, that's what you plan to deliver, so.
Sure.
Uh, and I'm going to be as succinct as possible, so my expectation is, based on, um, uh, called mud debt, uh, and infrastructure costs and service, uh, uh, provision costs. Will, when will we? When is the appropriate time for us to annex rooftops, uh, if at all? That's, that's the question I'm expecting you to answer.
Yeah.
That's it?
Per mud, per WCID, because each one's.
No, yeah, I, I really want to see, I want to see, yeah, per mud.
Right, per, per house, yeah, right. I mean, it can, it can vary, yeah.
And I mean, that should be a spreadsheet exercise, because I remember you doing that for us years ago on some, I can't remember which, which district it was.
Cause, cause each one may or may not have retail opportunities still available that could impact that based on an act, right? I mean, it, it's complicated.
Yeah, generally speaking, I don't think the retailer commercial sections are included in the muds, if they can help it.
If, if you're annexing a mud that has tonnage on a, on a main thoroughfare, then that area.
That could be valuable.
Right, exactly.
Well, not only that, going back to, uh, Serena's friend's, uh, comments during the recruit, retreatment, I was going to say.
Yep.
Uh, during the, the retreat.
The consultant, the consultant, not Serena's friend.
Aging infrastructures and whether it's worth it to even.
Yeah, annex some of those areas because of the aging infrastructure that we're going to have to take on. Um, so that's, yeah. Well, some of these, you know, they're like thirty years old and.
We, I, I tell you, I, you know I use Windermere as the example all the time.
And, and then, and then we've got this, uh, Matt here who can tell us, because we just had this conversation about aging infrastructure and, and, and taking care of it within the CCN. Well, what if, what if a mud district, uh, looks at, uh, an aging project, right? Twenty, twenty-five years and they're getting to that, and, and the mud says, okay, well, we're going to have to re, reissue debt for this. Well, what if the mud says, the citizens get together and say, wait, we don't want to pay for it, right? And so now that our debt is near zero, we're going to voluntarily be annexed into the city, and then the city is going to be given with aging infrastructure that they have to distribute the cost of that.
And that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Right, and so, so yeah, no, there, there are a lot of interesting questions to be answered.
Indeed, and I think that's, that's probably up to, uh, Jeremy as well.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
I, I believe we've got, uh, some mud districts that already have the, uh, are restricted from issuing additional debt.
That's how we got away with some of these people.
We've got.
There's other people who have issued debt purposely as a.
I want to say Wells Branch. So, certain areas, uh, it's, it's a poison pill.
I try not to.
They, they don't want to be annexed by Austin, so they keep issuing debt.
Wow, wow, we're putting everyone's business out there. Lots, lots of fun.
A motion is second to approve five B. Good job, Matt.
Doug just smelling all the tea tonight.
It's public info.
That's what Yankees do.
It's time to go down to Sixth Street, it's Mardi Gras.
All the way up north in Dallas, that's my hometown, yeah.
Uh, next item is five L approving a master service agreement with Ashford Inc. for storm and disaster recovery services and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Same question. Who are these guys?
Sure, so whenever we have a, when we have a, a major storm, is that what I'm on? We have a major storm, we want to be able to execute quick, quick and rapid, and so this is to have someone basically on call um, for a storm recovery, so they can get trucks on the ground really, really fast. Um, also, whenever we look at reimbursement from FEMA, et cetera, it is wise to have a contract in place. So I will strongly urge that we have a contract in place so that people can come up and do cleanup as quick as possible.
So FEMA will give us.
And I would like to be reimbursed, yes.
So we, has FEMA given us money from the last storm?
Remember, it takes.
They have provided funding. I don't know if it's a hundred percent, but yes, we have received some funding.
That's good. Are we, are we, are we going to have another one of those storms this year?
No, we'll have the next year.
Is this a pay-as-needed service? There's nothing attached to this?
It's just to have it open for them to come.
Okay.
And, and they helped us with winter storm Mara, didn't they?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, no, they, they demonstrated their, I mean, their worth.
It's a nationally known company.
So by having this contract, does that prioritize us first if there's multiple?
To anyone without a contract, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
And we didn't have a contract last time. So we're, we're going to jump the line.
Yeah, it is solid because they're Serena's friend as, as.
I have a lot of friends.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
Is there one last question, sir?
Okay.
Uh, is, is there a retainer fee for this contract?
No.
Beautiful. Go ahead.
We have a second. How people really do think, they see how much we enjoy working with each other.
The best city council.
Motion carried.
We won an award.
One more, uh, item five R approving a settlement and release with Michael L. McCall for the amount that it's easy settlement provided by Texas.
Oh, this is me. Is that Council Mc, McCall?
I was really, I was really, when I said McCall, I was like, what?
Well, actually, uh, I think, I think David did as well.
Oh. Is this Mr. McCall?
Yes, it is. Oh, really?
What?
You're going to come here wearing that? Unbelievable, unbelievable.
Had to do it.
Cowboys and lawnmowers will rise against you.
I don't know why.
Charlie sent us a, a, a.
How my situation got in front of the council, I have no idea. Victor, yeah. You had questions? You pulled five out. I did pull up.
Oh, I thought you did.
I think several of us did.
Huh?
I think several of us did.
Okay. Who pulled it? Uh, it wasn't me.
Sure, so we'd love to hear from you, um, and let us know.
Uh, is everyone here familiar with it, or do I have to go back over it?
They've received information.
I'd go, I'd start from, just, just start.
Explain it to us like we're five.
Okay, I got that. Uh, approximately around Thanksgiving, uh, was about maybe three o'clock, three thirty in the morning, I was, uh, approached at my front door by a, a police officer in full riot gear, so that kind of scared me. Uh, and he asked me, was that my, uh, white BMW out on the street? And I said, yes, it is. And he explained to me that a police cruiser has just hit your car. Now, it's a, uh, two thousand three twenty-three I, so it's a classic, and it was fully intact before that. Uh, the risk manager called me like the next couple of days, and, uh, told me not to worry about anything, everything would be taken care of. Uh, he was going to give me in contact with the insurance, the rental car would be paid for. Uh, and it took about a month. Uh, the insurance company, which is, I can't remember the name of it, but it's in here, uh, Texas Municipal. They sent me, uh, they wanted to tow the car out, and I told them that wasn't an option. Cause the car was a classic, and three, three, three weeks before the accident, I had just paid seven thousand dollars for a brand new engine. So I said, that's not an option, we not even going that route, so they gave me their, uh, total amount, total dollar amount, which was three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, or seventy-seven dollars. And he said, and I was told by the risk manager, well, the city would have to come up with the difference in the other half, they would have to collaborate. And I said, no problem. I said, as long as it gets done. He said, no problem when it get done. He said, and the rental car would you, it'll get reimbursed, everything. Now, the problem is, is that the final amount uh, that, uh, Ms. Alvarado gave is fine, that's fine, that's the final amount. The problem is, is that I've been paying for that rental car since December first.
Out of your own pocket.
And it's, and it's burned up all that three thousand seven hundred money that the insurance company gave me. So the diff, the, the final is, and the reason why I could not give her a final bill for the rental car is because I'm still in it.
Are you still in it now?
I'm still in it now. My car has been sitting, and it's, it's not even in the shop. It's been sitting for three months.
But it, um, I'm not allowed to ask questions yet.
So, so, uh, what, what's the specific ask?
The specific ask is the, the total was about eight thousand dollars.
Eight thou, so, so your, so your request to us is eight thousand dollars as, as a total, full and final payment?
Yes, so I can, so I can get it in the shop and I can get it out, because I'm not even able to put it in the shop.
So.
Or, or are you asking eight, eight thousand dollars or the TML difference?
No, but the TML difference is gone, because it's gone in the rental car.
No, and we, we just need to make sure we know what.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, would you, go ahead, Kim, yeah.
Kim has a question.
We'd like to go.
I like to go to the executive. Yeah, I like to go in the executive session.
Okay, uh, can I, can I ask a question though? Yeah, so my question was, even if you get the eight thousand dollars, that's not, your, your car's not gonna be fixed right now, so are you gonna turn it into rental car? Cause you still won't have a car.
And that's exactly, that was my exact concern, when I explained it, I said, now look, I said, this rental car is burning every day and I, I have to have it to get to work, but what we did is we allocated in that four thousand one hundred, a thousand dollars is for the car to get fixed when it hits the shop for three weeks, so I'm fine. I just allocated into that four thousand one hundred dollars, so I'll be fine. It's just I need, I need to stop right now and I need something cut right now, so I can get the process going and I don't keep accumulating money.
So Mayor, can we move to executive session, uh, is there legal advice on this item?
So we're in executive session.